This is pertaining to the 2019-20 budget. Roll call, please.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Byrne? I mean, I'm sorry, trustee.
You know, I wasn't trustee, yeah. Yeah.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here.
He already called her. All right, we have a court in person. So maybe you want to speak to the budget? Our annual budget? We have to have a public hearing, and this is the start of it.
If nothing else, I'll speak to the fact that Ann and Larry, who's not here tonight, did an outstanding job pulling it together. And it looks like we're in good shape coming out of the current fiscal year with a small surplus, which is a good thing, and going into next year with a balanced budget based on what I believe are very realistic and conservative revenue estimates, and as always, solid, right-on expenditure estimates.
Just for public information, the budget, the proposed budget, has been posted on the website, the village's website, for over a month. It's been presented in detail in each of the past two board meetings, and of course, the meeting is open tonight for anyone who wants to comment on what's been presented so far.
And those meetings are available on YouTube, and they were so exciting that Netflix wants to put them on their broadcast soon.
Okay, if there's no comments or questions from the public, the audience, there are motion to adjourn the public hearing.
So made.
Second.
Motion is second, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. Motion carries, the hearing's adjourned. Okay, I'd like to call the board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Takaoaka?
Here.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here, we have a court in person. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. If there's any citizen here that wishes to address the board on anything other than what's going to be on committee at a hole, you can address the board. But at committee at a hole, everybody that's here for, you know, I think the mall expansion, you will be recognized, obviously, at the committee at a hole. So, anyway? Okay. All right, let's see. Proclamation National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. National Public Safety Communications Week, April 14th through the 20th, 2019. Emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services. When an emergency occurs, the prompt response of the police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. The safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Vernon Hills Police Fire Communication Center. Public safety telecommunications are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. Public safety telecommunications are a single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. Public safety telecommunications for the villages of Vernon Hills, Lincolnshire, Libertyville, and Countryside Fire Protection District have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. Each telecommunicator exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now therefore be it resolved that Village President Board of the Vernon Hills declares the week of April 14th through the 20th, 2019 to be National Public Safety Communication Week in Vernon Hills in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep our villages and citizens safe. Who are we giving this one to? Chief?
Mayor, I'll take that, and we will post it in the communications.
Yeah, for the, all the dispatchers.
All the dispatchers.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, I'll set this over here. Just plug it in. Yeah, pass it down, eh? Okay. Did they pass everything down? Here, wait, bring that.
Could be. Yes, you did.
Yeah, you know, yeah. That was a little premature on the pass. Yeah, there's two of them. Okay. All right, proclamation Arbor Day, April 26th, 2019. If having recognized the economic, aesthetic, and environmental value a thriving community forest brings to its residents and visitors, Village of Vernon Hills has and continues to be committed to reforestation of land within its corporate boundaries and to prudent management of its existing forest resources. The Village of Vernon Hills shall continue to enhance its reforestation and forestry management policies and practices and shall continue to dedicate financial resources over and above Tree City USA requirements. The Tree City USA flag shall be flown at the Public Works Building on April 26th, 2019 to honor those residents and volunteers who have participated in the program of activities sponsored by the village. I, Roger Byrne, President of the Village of Vernon Hills, do hereby proclaim that the Village of Vernon Hills shall officially observe Arbor Day on Saturday, May 11th, 2019, and encourage the citizens to participate in appropriate activities and take advantage of the benefits of the parks and other natural areas in our communities. Okay, are you taking this one, Dave? Or you're not, you don't want it?
I really have nothing else to add. This year's Arbor Day celebration, we don't schedule it the same day as actually Arbor Day. The weather isn't as conducive. We'll continue to work with the Boy Scouts, and on that day, we'll be out at the Arbor Theater planting some trees and beautifying the village.
Well, and in light of Arbor Day, how many more, you know, trees do we have to replace from the Emerald Ash Borer?
So when the ash borer came to town, we had 3,600 ash trees just in our parkways alone, and we've went through and we've addressed 3,100 of them. We still continue to treat some of the other ones. The green ash didn't survive quite as well as the white ash, but for some critical locations such as on the golf course, we have been injecting and will continue to inject them. Ultimately, it's a Band-Aid. We're not sure they're going to make it, but it's important that we try.
Okay. If I can add to what Dave said, I've attended a couple of the events on our designated Arbor Day, and it's a very enjoyable day out there. We have quite the array of unique specimens, a wide variety of specimens of trees and plants, and most of them are marked, and you can go for a self-guided tour, but you can also participate with the Boy Scouts as they dig a few holes and plant a few trees and learn a little bit about forestry and how to just care for trees and plants. So I'd invite everybody to come out that morning. Was it May 11th at 9:00 AM? 10:00 AM? 9:00 AM.
Yeah, and just for this process and replacing the ash trees, what was that, started three years ago?
I think.
Longer?
I think almost, at least seven years ago.
Seven?
That's when we started.
Now, is it?
Time flies.
You budgeted, what, 1.3 mil?
I think our, I think our original anticipated budget was about 1.8 million. I think we brought it in right around 1.3 million.
Okay, that's, all right, well, that's good.
We've learned.
And includes this year's.
And that includes this year's. We learned a lot. We learned that we need diverse forestry, and so we plant much different trees. I think our forest, urban forest, is much better off now than it was back in the day with only having three or four species that basically developers installed back in the day.
Yeah, okay. All right, next is proclamation for Officer John Perret retirement. Chief, you want to read this, or do you want me to read it?
Whatever you prefer, sir.
Well, you're the chief, you know.
I'd be happy to read it.
Here, pass it down. John can't be here because he's on duty, right?
That's correct.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation in recognition of the service of Officer John P. Perret, Vernon Hills Police Department, Vernon Hills, Illinois. Whereas John P. Perret began employment with the Village of Vernon Hills Police Department as a police officer on August 21, 1990, and has served the village in that capacity for over 28 years. And whereas John brought with him over four years of police experience from the Village of Lynnenhurst, making his total contribution to law enforcement 32 years. And whereas John served as the Village of Vernon Hills Police Department's first Canine Officer from 1991 to 1997, during which he partnered with two separate police canines, Richie and Marco. And whereas John served as a field training officer from 2000, where he helped shape, form, and train the core of Vernon Hills Police Officers, still working today. And whereas John served as an officer in charge for numerous patrol shifts and investigations from 1999, during which he assisted with the supervisory duties of field operations throughout the department. And whereas John served as a school resource officers for Hawthorne School District 73 from 2015 to 2019, during which time he coordinated police services and resources for eight different schools. And whereas John accumulated numerous commendations and awards from both the department and outside agencies throughout his tenured career. John was awarded three lifesaving medals and was recognized by the Alliance Against Intoxicated Motorists AIM each year from 1999 to 2006 for his efforts to keep impaired drivers off the streets of Vernon Hills. And whereas John has been a great asset to the Vernon Hills Police Department throughout his career and has served with professionalism and distinction, the residents of Vernon, the residents of the Village of Vernon Hills have been greatly rewarded by John's service to this community as a police officer during the past 28 years. And now therefore be it proclaimed that the President and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Vernon Hills, on behalf of the entire Vernon Hills community, College of Lake, extended John P. Perret their gratitude and thanks for his many years of service to the community and law enforcement profession dated this third day of April, 2019.
Yeah, John's obviously been a great asset to the village, a great police officer, and we're sorry to see him go, but.
He continues to serve in public service, so we'll.
Yeah, yeah.
Not too far away.
No, that's okay. All right. Yeah, go ahead.
Just a quick thing on that, I think I mentioned it before I talked about, he was very well respected by the students at Hawthorne, and on his last day there, it was amazing to watch the students, they did a final all-call for him to come to the office and had all of the students come out into the hallways, and he had to walk the whole hallway of the school to, again, thunderous ovation. So he, the work he did there the last four years was outstanding.
Thank you for that.
Was, was John the canine officer assigned to the, which dog that died?
Yes, his first one, Richie.
Richie. Yeah, that was, there was a car accident, and he gets hit by another, I don't remember all the facts. Well, you.
Survived the rollover accident, but the dog got out on the street, got hit by another car.
Yeah, that was, that was a sad day. I think we actually carried life insurance on the dog, because they're not cheap, they, you know, trained and purchased.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. All right, what's next? Village Manager, no, 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 Finance Director, Treasurer. You're next.
I'm next.
Yeah.
We have not exactly the monthly report, but more of the year-to-date through end of February, Finance and Treasurer's Report. Just want to draw your attention to the cash and investment balance for all funds is 34, sorry, 35.6 million, which is an increase of 3.1 million from the beginning of the fiscal year. The 3.1 million difference is going to be kind of chewed up a little bit because we're going to pay the debt service payments that are due, actually were due on March 30th, and then we are doing the early bond call for the 2005 GO bonds. So those two payments will total about 1.8 million dollars to bring down the 3.1 million balance right now. Additionally, I'd like to draw your attention to sales tax is doing very well. The sales tax that's received in February is for actually November retail activity, and it was one of the best monthly results in village history. That's not a December or June sales month, so that's promising.
How much was it?
Um, I'm trying to give highlights. It was... Yes, thank you.
What was it?
1.34 million.
Yeah, okay.
Pre-rebate.
Yeah, but that was for a period of what, 90 days? Was it just for that month?
No, one month.
Okay, okay.
One month.
It takes 90 days to get the money?
Yes, yeah.
Do we have it yet?
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
Yes.
You know, well, the state can be kind of slow, you know?
Yes.
Since they got a terminal case of the shorts, you know? Yeah, it's, yeah, right.
Consistently late, but.
Yeah, okay.
Just another item is a couple of revenue sources besides our regular sales tax. Our homeroom sales tax is about 11.5% above projection. Income tax is about 7.9% above projection. Community development fees are 10.1% above projection right now, and I'll stay away from the below projections. And the food and beverage tax is 21.4% above projection, and that's just with five months of receipts.
So how much in sales tax do we get the last, in the last year? Sales tax from retail and all that? Probably more than that. Because there's, you know, there's some rebates there. Probably closer to 14 million.
The actual sales tax here is cash basis, 8,852?
No. For the year? No.
Let's see. But that's cash basis, too.
And that doesn't include the home rule?
Right, that's, no, that's just sales tax.
Okay, so with the home, okay, with the home rule tax, how much, what is that?
That is another 1.9 million.
Okay, anything else?
For sales tax?
Yeah.
No, those are the two.
You including CDW?
Um, this is the actual pre-rebate basis, so yes.
Okay, matter.
That's all I had.
Okay. Who's doing the Vernon Hills Golf Course report?
Uh, we just, sorry. We just put that in the packet for requirement. Kind of wasn't going to update you on it, sorry.
Okay. All right, Public Works Director Brown and Village Engineer.
Thank you very much. Wanted to provide an update on Lake Charles and the study that we've done recently. It's probably appropriate, now that we're talking about Arbor Day, to have this type of discussion. I want to also put a plug in for John Petrillo. He started a new website for us with Go Green Vernon Hills, and so it'll have a lot of links in terms of different environmental things that are happening within Vernon Hills. But more importantly for today, I wanted to provide an update about Lake Charles. Lake Charles has been a discussion with the board and staff for a period of time, so we thought it was important to do a study. Burke Engineering, who also did the Foxconn study for the county, has completed their study. They gave us a draft. They will be here before the board with a more formal study result, but I wanted to give you a couple of updates in terms of specifics. So really what we're finding is Lake Charles has a number of concerns. It's a suburban environment, there's a lot of goose population that adds nutrients to the lake, it's got a 3,600-acre tributary area to it, and then what are our, what are our concerns? You know, it does have a lot of algae blooms and aquatics that are growing. One of the largest items is really the sedimentation of the lake. If you look at the north end of the lake, there's a large delta forming, and so that's something we want to address. In terms of the study, we've shared it with the Park District, because the Park District maintains some of the lake systems within the village also, so we invited them. I worked with Kevin Borgard and Greg's Landing HOA, gave them advanced copy because they have some specific interest in Lake Charles also. The irrigation system for Lake Charles, for Greg's Parkway and Huntington, there's an intake, and so it's right in that location where sediment is occurring. So essentially, the board's about to approve the budget for this year. We have some money for a number of different items. We want to do something this year. I have not asked for money because the study just came out, so what I'm looking to do is to change some of the items. Harvey Lake, we were going to start with some of the improvements in Harvey Lake along the shoreline. I suspect everyone in this room feels that addressing Lake Charles is a high priority, and so we're not asking for a budget change. There's $30,000 for that line item. What we're, what I'm asking is for support from the board to move forward and do some things for this coming budget year. Specifically, what the study looked at is, one of the largest issues that we're faced with is really the upstream sedimentation that's heading into the lake. What does that mean? That means that we went upstream and we looked all the way into downtown Mundeline, and there's a number of eroding banks that are causing the sediment to make it into Lake Charles. The cost to deal with Lake Charles and to dredge it would be 11.3 million dollars. No one has 11.3 million dollars to do that. If we dredged it, we still have the sediment loads coming into the lake, so we need to first take care of the input into the lake. So what we're looking to do is a couple of things. We're going to reach out to everyone, our partners, our partners being Mundeline, Mundeline, Park District, County Board, LDOT, Lakes Management, Des Plaines River Watershed Group, because we need the banks upstream to be stabilized to protect the lake. How do you pay for that? It's about $10 million to take care of all of that amongst a number of different entities. So we put grant money, we put grants together, and we work in partnership to try to solve that part of it. Short term, what Vernon Hills can address and improve Lake Charles for this budget year is something very simple. For $30,000, we're looking to put in an aeration system. Basically, it's just a small, something smaller than this in front of us. It's really a cabinet that has compressed air, goes through five-eighths-inch tubes, eight different locations or so through the lake, and we pump air out into Lake Charles, have a couple of small little bubbler discs at the bottom, improves the dissolved oxygen for the lake, and we can get that done for about $30,000. One of the problems with the algae is you have the warm climate on the surface, colder below, and so what this does is doesn't allow for sometime during July or August where it flips and all the cold moves to the surface, it'll have more consistent water conditions. So we'd like to move forward with that. And then something else that my staff is looking to do is shift some of our labor. We understand between Huntington and Greg's Parkway, there's some banks that we need to look at. We'd like to remove the buckthorn and then plant some grass along the west side while we still protect some of the tree line there. So those are two things that we'd like to implement this year and try to improve Lake Charles, and so just wanted to provide that report. We'll have a larger report once Burke finishes their study, and we expect they'll be before the board within 30 days. So that's all I have for Lake Charles.
Trustee Yapp and I.
So I wanted to thank you for spending all that time and effort on this. I know there are a lot of people in the community that were really, that are and continue to be very concerned about that, so I thank you for that. Actually, I put my line on to speak to that, but I also had a question for Ann. I don't know if anyone else has a question for Dave first.
Go ahead. I'm going to, yeah, make, because that isn't for the whole year, the sales tax, Richard.
Right, well.
Well.
Yeah, so hopefully not, hopefully.
Well, it's not.
So, so, right.
Go ahead.
Which is only November's sales.
Yeah, so we got, we got to go till the end of April.
Right.
Right. And the projection is, I think it's, I think it's almost over 13 million dollars.
Yes, for, sorry. For both the, um, sales tax, the regular sales tax, the projection is 11,000, 30,000, and then home rule is projected at 2,136,000.
Okay, so there we are.
Right.
13, 14? Okay, I just wanted to clarify for those, because there's a lot of people in the room.
Yeah, so I still have a question.
Yeah, sure.
So I don't know if you're able to get us this information, but relevant to the future discussion, I don't know if it's possible to break down what amount comes from mall vendors. I know there are certain confidentiality aspects in play, but if it's possible to get those numbers so the community would know how significant?
When we get to it, it's probably going to be mentioned tonight.
So I wasn't sure if that was part of the discussion or not.
Just to give a preview to everybody, there's going to be mention of how much money goes to District 73 from the shopping mall every year.
Right.
So you want to take a guess? Well, I'm just saying. It's, it's, Steve, how much? You could say it. 3 million a year.
Goes to the district.
Yep.
So are we?
3 million a year.
I just want to make sure that we'll get, that we'll get the total numbers. Is that, is that correct? That'll be, that'll be part of.
Yeah, I just wanted to preview it.
Thank you.
Okay? Okay, what else?
Well, I just, I just want you to reiterate it one more time. To dredge Lake Charles is 11 million plus. I don't think anybody is thinking about dredging it unless there's a magnificent benefactor out there, so we're going to need to work as best we can within reasonable dollar constraints, but 11 million is just way out of sight for this organization to even anticipate doing.
But the good news is, we have a well we put in, how long ago now?
12, 14 years.
Yeah, and that well provides water to do what in Greg's Landing?
It provides for the golf course, and then there's irrigation system that Greg's Landing maintains in terms of pulling water out of, out of the lake also. So the well helps replenish. So the well helps replenish the water level of Lake Charles.
Right.
It supports everyone.
Right, and there's no charge to anybody for water that lives in Greg's Landing? Is that correct? Thank you. I know that's, Catherine, all right, so go ahead.
You mean for, for those specific purposes?
Yeah.
Irrigation.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, you still gotta, you gotta write your check to Lake County.
I just want to make sure.
Oh, no, no, shit. Yeah, click, click Jawa, click Jawa, yeah.
Good clarification.
Yeah, but it could be worse as far as the assessment goes, okay? Uh, just water, everything, and it does look great over there. Okay.
Fuel system update.
So we'll bring, we'll bring Burke back in about thirty days. And then I, I do have the next item if you, if we wanted to move to the next one. So really, just an update, there is an ordinance in, on the Omnibus agenda. It's ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh forty-three. It's for Stenstrom, for the fuel tank improvements. A number of people in our, in our audience, our friends at Hawthorne School District Seventy-three, Vernon Hills High School, Memorial Library, Countryside Fire District, Vernon Hills Park District, and one other entity. We all, we supply fuel for these different entities. It's a really good relationship. Unfortunately, right now, our, we, we received water not into the fuel, but into the liner tank. And so we had to shut down our operations. We're working on it ve- uh, very fast, trying to solve it. This contract is, has been executed. We talked to, pulled the board ahead of time and they're moving forward. They've ordered the parts. It takes two to three weeks to get the parts and then they will do the construction. Essentially, they're going to be digging about four, up all the concrete, four and a half feet deep. They're going to replace the manholes, they're going to take care of the diesel and the unleaded. We had a failure of some flanges that were nineteen ninety-six vintage, they need help. So my apologies to everyone who I serve in terms of providing fuel. We're going to be down about thirty days. We're going to get it done as quick as we can. So I just wanted to update the board and everyone else on that. We have communicated to our users, we're going to get it done as quick as one can. But just wanted to advise ordinance twenty nineteen dash oh forty-three's on the consent agenda and I recommend approval of that.
What's the gallon capacity of each tank?
Ten thousand for unleaded, five thousand for diesel.
Good. And how much is unleaded gas that we pay for? There's.
Well, as the market fluctuates, it's a plus or minus depending on what the OPUS standard is. So what that equates to is we're able to provide fuel to our users for about a dollar three less than what you would buy at across the street.
So on both dieselly and gasoline?
That number reflects unleaded, I'm not sure on the diesel.
All right, that's good.
So all our friends are paying about a buck and a half more a gallon at the mobile station right now just because we can't supply it. And gas is now over three bucks a gallon.
Yeah, yes, sir. And one of the things I've reached out to Graham Enterprises and also working with Ernie's and Ernie Shell, trying to find out if there's a solution that we can have some of the taxes abated. Because the local government, state and fed, they wouldn't have to pay it if they went through us. So I'm asking those questions, hopefully I can help them out.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments or questions on this one? All right, let's see. Does anybody else have any speaking parts?
Yes, the commissioner does, the building commissioner.
Oh, yeah. Building Commissioner Atkinson, Home Depot Outdoor Garden Center.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to point out for the board that this, that the resolution approving their outdoor merchandise displaying sales permit is on the Omnibus agenda. What they're proposing is what they've done in past years. There'd be a display area that's approximately ninety-six feet wide by two hundred and thirty-nine feet long. That would be located generally in front of the garden center. They would display live goods there. Display area would be surrounded by a white picket fence and would remain in place from April fourth to September first of this year. No changes from what they've done in previous years. So I just wanted to point that out to the board, that resolution.
Is, is anybody here from Home Depot?
Yes, sir.
Would they like to give themselves a plug?
Whatever.
Come on, you have to come to the presentation altar, let's go. You guys are young, you need this experience.
Yep.
What's, who's this guy? You worked there?
Yeah, I worked there before.
Well, you get up here too.
Come on up.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta tell us who you are.
I'm, I'm the operations manager at the Vernon Hills Home Depot.
Do you have a name?
Robert Ballard.
Good, and how about your partner?
Tyler, Tyler Dinkovich.
Okay, and what do you do there?
I don't work there no more.
Yeah, he did.
Oh.
So that's what he said, here, you go sit down.
Yep.
All right, well, we got that out of the way. All right, so, all right.
The golf course needs a bartender though, and somebody to work the counter there.
He's just here for moral support.
Does anybody have any questions for this gentleman?
Same as previous years.
When, when are you starting? When, when's the first?
Yeah.
What's the first date that you're going to have?
April fourth, yep.
So you're basically.
That's a bit presumptive, isn't it?
Well, yeah, that's what we put on the paperwork. Yep, every single year, and I think it's very beneficial to the city and obviously.
How long you worked for?
I've worked for Home Depot for eleven years.
There?
Not at that store, for three, at that store, yep.
Okay. All right, yeah, it's a nice pick of fauna.
Yep, exactly.
Or flora.
Flora.
Flora, yeah. Of course, at night, the fauna probably comes and eats it.
We already, we already banned the sale of fauna, so.
I thought, but we didn't ban deers entering our property, did we? Okay, all right, thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Well, no, it's on, it's on Omnibus.
Okay, all right, now it's Omnibus Vote Agenda and.
So Ernie's.
Oh, Ernie's Outdoor Special Event.
Yeah.
Okay. Who's here? Who's doing this one? Is this like, like a car show and stuff?
We, we had, I'm Jeff Holm. Last year, we had the first annual Ernie's Truck Show and it was a great success. Mother Nature cooperated. This year, we're going to move it up a couple of weeks and it's going to be July eleventh. And last year, we had, the first year was about a hundred trucks. And we raised about fifteen hundred dollars, which went to the Jared Allen Homes for Wounded Warriors. This year, I think we're going to do Folds of Honor, which is a charitable organization where they give scholarships to children who've lost or parents who've served. So we're going to actually be building a home for those guys like we did St. Jude a couple of years ago. So we try to pick a different foundation for each year, so we kind of use this as one of the vehicles.
The Icon was the general contractor at the St. Jude home in, in Riviera Estates.
That is correct.
What, what, what actually went to St. Jude, two, three hundred thousand?
About two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars went to St. Jude. And then last year, we did one in Long Grove. Icon also did it and that was for the Jared Allen Homes for Wounded Warriors. We haven't sold that, but probably donated about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Oh, that's good, yeah.
And we're in the process now of starting another one, which will go to the Folds of Honor, charitable honor. And Ernie's has always been good enough, they've been longtime friends. And so last year, we started the truck show. I think they're going to maybe work with the village in some capacity with the car show. I think we're working through some of those details too, so, but this was just their own event that was on premises and it was a lot of fun. So we're going to do it again this year, as long as it's okay with you guys.
Okay. All right, any other comments or questions for Jeff?
It'll be the exact same venue, place. I mean, we did have food, but we don't charge anything for it.
And it went well last year, so.
Yeah, it worked.
Now, did you send us the information to put on the boards and email blast out to people and all that?
We'll do all that and of course, we'll send you all invitations as it gets closer.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
Great, thanks, guys.
Okay, now it's Omnibus Vote Agenda time.
Motion to approve items A through P.
A through P, okay.
Second half?
There's a second? Any comments or questions? If not, roll call.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Okay, any unfinished additional business? No. Any new business or communication?
Do you want to say anything? There haven't been any shootings, but.
Bingo.
Yeah, well, this won't, it'll be on YouTube.
Yes, tomorrow, well, tomorrow, yeah. Tomorrow is the last post twelve forty-seven American Legion bingo at the golf course right down the hill here. Everybody's invited. The only thing we ask is, is you bring money, so.
That's fair.
But this will be the last one for this year. And we won't start up again until next fall, probably October if everything's still the same.
Okay.
I'd like to add a PSA along the lines of Trustee Schultz's PSAs. There, there have been a number of terrible deaths lately on the highways. So including just last week, two of our state troopers in a two-day period. And, and the latest one was six days, six years, almost to the day of when our state trooper Souter was, was killed. So I just want to remind everyone of Scott's Law to pull over.
Well, slow down too.
Slow down and pull over.
Yeah. And even obviously do that in work zones. I know, nobody wants you to get down to forty-five or fifty, whatever it is, but you, you need to do it. You know, Christ, the construction season is upon us. Okay, any other new business coming forward to board? I got, I gotta, you know, just say it, yesterday was Election Day. And quite frankly, you know, there was different races that, in town with, with school boards and park boards and high school boards and elementary school boards. And obviously the village board. And I, I'd like to congratulate everybody that participated, whether you won or lost. And it was, you know, it was a, I think a positive cleanly run campaign by everybody. I'm not sure there's something I'm missing, but overall, I'd say, you know, it wasn't a, like a bloodbath, you know, of false accusations and everything. It was, it wasn't bad. Anybody concur or no? Everybody, anybody here needs to make bad things? No? Okay, well, that's good then, right?
The only bad thing is nine point nine seven percent turnout.
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah.
That's, that's sad, folks, that's sad.
Hey, you know, unfortunately, it happens every, every two years. Not, not, maybe not next year, next, you know, in two thousand twenty-one, but it, it's historically about ten, eleven percent for this, this particular municipal and, and school district elections and memorial, I mean, library elections. So anyway, I'm, thanks to all the people that came out and vote, you know?
Yeah.
I know you can still complain, but it'd be nice if you voted and then you complained, you know? All right, what else? Is there a motion to adjourn the board meeting, go into committee at the hall?
With the, yeah.
Yeah, we got a consecutive session after everything.
I got, I forgot to mention something here.
Yeah, go ahead.
A lot of my neighbors are wondering what's, what's the situation with garbage pickup?
What's the situation?
Unless it's just my neighborhood, I mean, they haven't picked up, right.
What has been the situation?
Where? No pickup.
What, what days were missed?
Tuesday and Wednesday. Tuesday and Wednesday.
No, you, you mean, all of Greg's Landing?
Correct.
Yeah.
The recyclables were, were picked up, but not the regular true.
No, I, I think ours got picked up.
Mine got picked up.
Yours got picked up?
On Tuesday, yeah.
Maybe it's just ours.
It's just your house.
Yeah.
No, no, you and Don.
Pay your bill!
If you don't pay, they don't pick.
You're next door neighbor, so.
No, um, a week ago Friday, they missed NCT number four. Because I had a long conversation with one of the people at, at, at not so advanced disposal. And, and they're, they're, we need to maybe revisit the, when is their contract up?
Yeah, I believe it's the end of twenty twenty.
Well, because I, I, I'm concerned about the fact that when you've got a monopoly, some of their customer service could be a little better. I'm still, I'm still waiting, well, I'm still waiting for a call back as to why they missed us that Friday. And that was on the twenty-second of March, so.
All right, so NCT four, what's, which subdivision?
Mearfield.
Village.
Mearfield Village. John Petrillo, you're the point man, right?
Yes, sir. So I was talking to Liz, she said she had received no complaints, but I will follow up directly with them and I'll provide a response to the board as to Mearfield Village and NCT four.
Well, the NCT four one, we've got settled because I had a meeting with a gentleman from there, Mr. Diaz, who used to be a road driver. So he's, he's very good and he followed up on it because we had had a meeting with him before with, about a year or so ago when we had a similar problem. So he took care of, of the NCT four one, so that, that's been taken care of.
Well, you know, if you want to bring a representative in, we'll put it on committee at the hall and then everybody can gather again.
When, when does the contract expire?
Twenty twenty.
So we're definitely going to get it reviewed anyway. We're going to go to an RFP and.
Yeah, it gets, yeah, year and a half, yeah.
I'm sure there's an escape cause, you know? Well, what, yeah, let's bring him, I'd still bring him in and let's hear, let him hear everybody's gripes, you know?
Yeah, we do, we do have to, we, we do have to review it, but you also have to remember that it's not as easy as flipping off a light switch, turning off one and turning on the other. There was months of transitional issues, shall we say, between the two groups.
Well, all right, and, and last word on it, you know, you know, if they don't pick up the garbage, it, it gets kind of ripe.
Yes.
You know, okay, there's a motion to adjourn the board meeting. After the committee at the hall hearing and everything, we got to go to close session to discuss personnel. Okay, is there a motion?
It's made.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye. A motion carries, like to call the committee at the hall meeting to order. Uh, the first item is approval of the committee at the hall meeting minutes of March nineteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion second, any comments, questions, deletions, corrections? Anybody? Okay, roll call.
Trustee Cook?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schultz?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Takaoka?
Aye.
Trustee Brown?
Aye.
President Byrne?
Aye, motion carries. Okay, next is the request from Vernon Hills High School for approval of the site and landscape revisions to allow construction of three additions at one four five North Lakeview Parkway. Building Commissioner Atkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can give you a brief summary of what the request is tonight. Vernon Hills High School is requesting approval for three additions that they'll be doing to their facility. The first addition, excuse me, shown here, there's the three additions. There's one on the east side of the building that's indicated as A. There'll be another addition in the courtyard that's indicated as area B. And finally, on the west side of the building is a gymnasium addition that's indicated as area C. The renderings in front of you here show the east side addition. There's a three-story portion that includes classrooms. And then the one-story portion you see there is for a stem cell lab. In the upper left-hand corner of this picture, you'll see the addition in the courtyard. This will serve the cafeteria, staff lounge, and similar uses such as that. The other two drawings show renderings of the gymnasium that'll be added on to the west side of the building. So for tonight, Vernon Hills High School already has their special use in place. So the board is just being requested to consider, again, the site plan changes and the landscape changes as well. And if the board believes that tonight's request is appropriate, then a motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance approving the site plan changes and landscape changes is recommended, subject to the conditions that are outlined in your packet. And the entourage from Vernon Hills High School is here to answer any questions that you may have. And the entourage from Vernon Hills High School is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Was there a motion to approve?
Just to clarify, in addition to those three areas, there's also a mechanical room expansion, I see, on the plans, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Does anybody want to have a talking part, or, there's only, there's a, eighty, huh? Okay, there's no spokesperson?
We'll answer any questions you have.
Okay.
Motion to approve, subject to the five conditions listed in our.
If I may, uh, motion directing staff to prepare an ordinance?
What he said.
Here's a motion, a second? Well, I have to seize this opportunity. Is there any way, uh, a high school can help an elementary school district since you got such a large surplus?
Not really.
Huh?
Not really.
Is that, was that a no?
It's a not really, yeah.
Yeah. It's nice not to go to referendum, you're going to spend how much, thirty million?
Uh, roughly, yeah.
Or twenty-eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's came in favorable, so that's.
That's good, all right. Okay.
Roll call.
Yeah, roll call.
Trustee Brown.
Aye.
Trustee Schultz.
Aye.
Trustee Mark Bart.
Aye.
Trustee Takaka.
Aye.
Trustee Cook.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye, motion carries.
Can I say one thing on behalf of us, Roger, that we, come on, I'm sorry.
No, 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 you got, you got.
That's why we have, the presentation altered, okay?
The, the good folks.
You know, I'm usually sitting where you're at during our board meetings, so, uh, forgive me. Uh, my name is Dr. Prentice Lee, I'm the superintendent at District one-twenty-eight, and we also have John Gilliam here, our board president, architects, our, our assistant superintendent for finance, Dan Stanley. I just want to tell you again how much we appreciate the support of the village and working with District one-twenty-eight Vernon Hills High School. Uh, through every level of your organization in this village, we have a wonderful working relationship. And you can see the result of that relationship and how our kids succeed at Vernon Hills High School and Libertyville High School as well. You know, excellence doesn't happen on its own, and it happens with partnerships. And we just want to tell you how much we value the partnerships that we have with the village, um, here. And, uh, as always, we want to build on those excellent working relationships, so thank you very much, as always.
We're still retiring bonds from our partnership. We, what, what do we spend, fifteen million over there? Oh, oh, that's right, you're, you're the new guy, yeah. Yeah, okay, it was a lot of money, but, but it's okay.
Thank you.
All right, guys.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, take care. You don't have to stay, if you want to stay, that'd be special. Free up, free up some seats. All right, next is the Milanofi report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, really quick, just to remind the board, this was a study that was approved as part of the fiscal year eighteen nineteen budget. Uh, we contracted with Milanofi and Associates to, uh, prepare a market strategy and redevelopment study for three particular areas. The first one is Hawthorne Mall, uh, the second one is the remaining vacant lots in the shops at Greg's Landing, uh, and then thirdly, the Darling Farm. So, for tonight, John Milanofi is here to review with you the first draft of the study that he's prepared. Uh, he will then receive comments from the village board, uh, include that into what will ultimately be a final draft that would be posted on the village website for all to review. So, with that, I'll throw it over to John, uh, who will review the results of his study for you.
Before you start, John, uh, because you've got a lot of folks behind you, um, I don't, you need to really stay close to the mic, or do we have a handheld?
You have the handheld, right?
Do we have, no, a handheld microphone? Is one available?
Well, you could come over here on this side.
Well, I'd like to see the presentation, so, to refer to, but certainly.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm delighted to be here.
Well, everybody could see the screen, right?
Yeah, and they're getting you a handheld.
Thank you. Uh, John Milanofi, president of Milanofi and Associates, so we've been a consultant to the village, um, since the early nineties and followed your retail base for many years. And, uh, we were asked to prepare a comprehensive market study and store strategy analysis for Hawthorne Mall, the sites up by Greg's Parkway, as well as the, uh, sure. And evaluate, uh, the present and future retail trends. Thank you. And really, to, um, determine the personal consumption expenditures and how they relate to the mall and the sites.
Oh, we're.
Thank you.
Right, yeah.
Hey, uh, so, we wanted to.
Is that working?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
But don't we have to charge those periodically?
So, anyway, I, I love talking about. I thought you were charging those out there.
Go ahead.
Okay. So, anyway, I, I've been, uh, working in retailing since nineteen eighty-five. We've been involved with Mall of America, the largest retail and entertainment complex in the world. I'm currently involved with Northbrook Court in Northbrook, Illinois, the Motorola campus out in Schaumburg, uh, Easton Town Center in Columbus, Ohio. So, we, we do a lot of work with malls and retailers. And so, we were charged with preparing a community-wide retail market study and store strategy analysis for the village and looked at personal consumption expenditures, and we really wanted to identify the types of end-users that would best meet market demand in, uh, the village of Vernon Hills. Uh, we prepared a development strategy for Hawthorne Center, as well as the sites up by Greg's Parkway and, uh, the Darling Farm. We also looked at stores that are vacant or soon to be vacant in, uh, the village and what, uh, stores could potentially replace those, and we formulated an implementation plan for that. You know, it's, uh, if you read the newspaper, all the, uh, the headlines are about the retail apocalypse and how the retail Armageddon, and it's, you know, there's a lot of headlines out there. Certainly, there's been changes in retailing. We had about eight thousand store closings in two thousand seventeen. A lot of these stores were weak. Um, everyone's been waiting for Sears to, uh, you know, for their demise. And, uh, there was about ten thousand store closings forecast in two thousand eighteen. So, all these retailers have slashed their growth plans. E-commerce is becoming so much more prevalent, it represented about five hundred and thirteen billion dollars in the United States in two thousand eighteen. We've got an oversaturated retail market, about twenty-three square feet per capita. If you include all the little downtown areas, it's about forty-eight square feet. We've, you know, we've really got a changing consumer with millennials. They're avoiding homeownership, marriage, uh, car ownership, I mean, so, and you're the greatest consumers when you have children, and they're delaying all those purchases, and that's having an impact on retailing. In, uh, two thousand oh-nine, we, uh, conducted a similar evaluation for the village of Vernon Hills, and we identified several retailers that we thought there was a market for that would meet market demand in Wheeling, and they've ultimately located here. And I have a short list, I mean, from Aldi to Dick's to Dave and Buster's Home Goods, uh, the movie theaters, Lowe's, even Menards, we talked about relocating them way back when, uh, Maggiano's, uh, the PGA Superstore, REI, so, you know, Whole Foods and Stein-Hoffel, so our batting average was pretty good. I mean, if you looked at how much sales tax revenue those are generating now and their overall retail sales, it's pretty significant. So, you look at all these store closings and retail bankruptcies around the country, it's really a, you know, it, this is not germane to Vernon Hills, this is a national trend that's going on. And so, obviously, we had Toys R Us and, uh, with, uh, Carson's, part of the Bon-Ton Companies, and Sears. As I said, everyone was waiting for Sears, uh, to start closing stores, and a lot of the mall, mall owners have become prepared to do that. So, you look at all these bankruptcies, and we had several of those stores in, in Vernon Hills. We've got rising vacancies, I mean, we worked on Mall of America, that's got four point two million square feet. So, if they have, like, five percent vacancy or ten percent vacancy, it's significant. Um, there's some pictures here of Easton Town Center in Columbus. What, what mall developers are trying to do today is bring in more entertainment and more experiential retail that people are going to want to get off their couch and come out and shop and spend some time and things that they can't get on the internet. So, I mean, we've had rising vacancies, these are the numbers for the Chicago metropolitan area. We were at eleven point one percent in the fourth quarter of two thousand eighteen, and we are up, uh, from ten point one percent in the fourth quarter of two thousand seventeen, but it was only, like, eight point six percent in two thousand thirteen. So, we've had a lot of store closings, but a lot of retailers are actually implementing omnichannel, and they are maybe reducing some of their store counts, but, um, even the online retailers are now adding stores. They've realized that they have to have physical stores to en, enhance their sales. And so, you look at, um, I'm not going to talk about all these, but, I mean, Toys R Us, seven hundred and thirty-five stores, you know, seven hundred stores with mattress firm and so forth, so you add all these up, you know, this is something that's happening all over the country, and this isn't, you know, the Vernon Hills isn't being, uh, they're not closing the stores because this isn't a dynamic market. You know, even Target, who opens stores all over, they close stores in McHenry, Morgan Park, uh, you know, all, they've probably closed five or six stores, you know, Lowe's, all these retailers are readjusting their store portfolios. So, when we look at Vernon Hills, we conducted a driving time analysis, and we looked at, to simulate what consumers would experience when they drive, and that assisted us in delineating the trade area for Hawthorne Center and the other sites in the village. So, if you look at the primary trade area of the Hawthorne Center, it's a five-mile trade area and then extending out to seven miles for the total trade area. And then we, um, looked at the population resources and the, um, expenditure dynamics in Vernon Hills, and we put all the market support factors in there, how, what's the population density, what's the households, what's the average household income and so forth. And then what we did from there is we, we, uh, because we worked in two thousand nine, we had all the sales data for the community.
Right.
And it's very interesting to see, Roger, excuse me, Mayor Byrne was talking about retail sales and looking at how each category affects the village's retail sales base. And then, uh, we're up to one point four billion in total sales. So, you look at your municipal tax and your home rule tax, when we were talking about that earlier, I could tell that it was, it's, it had to be a little bit higher. And, uh, the Department of Revenue just came out with the two thousand eighteen numbers, and you guys are up to one point five billion in total sales. So, the, uh.
What, what was the category we, we lead in, was it furniture?
Furniture, uh, Vernon Hills has the highest furniture sales and electronics sales of any municipality other than Chicago in the Chicago metropolitan area.
And it's, sorry about my bad. But that means we're, we're selling some mattresses.
Absolutely. Uh, you know, with Stein-Hoffels and all, the other furniture and electronics stores in the community, uh, it's significant. We write a report on retail sales in the metro area.
It is interesting.
And, uh, Vernon Hills is in some of the top, uh, is at the top of some of those top twenty communities.
Well, eight, I mean, it, it, I mean, like, for two thousand seventeen, it was six hundred and forty-nine, uh, million.
Right. So, you look at the, it's, it's unprecedented, you have the highest sales.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised when it.
But unfortunately, like a lot of other communities, your general merchandise sales have gone down from two hundred and fifty-nine million down to one hundred and sixty-seven, and that's the weakness in the Sears and Carson's and some of the other stores. But we look really carefully at these numbers and how they impact the mall and, and, you know, where are we going and what categories are underserved and how we can strengthen your overall retail sales base. But you don't live in a vacuum, so we, we also looked at the surrounding communities. So, Gurnee, I mean, first of all, Vernon Hills is a retail Mecca. They're the corner of Main and Main of retailing in Lake County, Illinois. And so, you look at Gurnee, you have always, for the most part, led Gurnee in sales productivity. Um, and so, you look at, you know, what their, um, sales in general merchandise were, two hundred and fifty-two million, and now they're one hundred and sixty-six million. So, all these numbers are in the report, I'm not going to belabor it here tonight, but we looked at all the categories and what's happening, um, and particularly at the other malls that, that compete with Hawthorne Center. So, you look at Northbrook Court, talk about another one that got hit pretty hard in general merchandise. They were at a hundred and thirty million, and now they're at forty-five million in general merchandise. And they plan to tear down Macy's, they're going to add three hundred and fifteen apartment units for empty nesters, divorcees and so forth, they're going to add a grocery store, and they're going to add, uh, other retail and, uh, restaurants is really the strong, uh, part of their redevelopment plan as well, to create entertainment and get people off the couch to, uh, come out and, and enjoy the mall. So, the, um, we also looked at Libertyville, just because it was contiguous, and their automobile sales are very significant, at four hundred and thirty-six million. What's interesting in twenty.
We sell more furniture.
Absolutely.
I just.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, so, you know, these are really, it's really interesting to get into the demand side. Everyone talks about the supply side, but really, this is what's really happening out there. You know, you could say, oh, we're, we're, you know, the mall is hurting and, you know, we, Melody Farms and what we're doing, but when you look at the overall sales, we're growing, overall. And the Chicago metropolitan area was up three and a half percent in two thousand eighteen. These numbers just came out from the Department of Revenue, and we're up over four billion dollars. Uh, auto sales are up one point four billion. So, um, the next slide, we did not have the benefit of the fourth quarter data, so we looked at the first three quarters in Vernon Hills and looked at, uh, the growth that was going on with those. The next thing we, we do, we look at per capita retail expenditures and what people are spending in each retail category, and we forecast those for the projection years out to, uh, two thousand twenty-eight. And this assists us in determining what the total retail potential is in each segment of the trade area. I'm sorry, these are small.
So, how many thousands of people involves this, the, these numbers?
Right, these.
Not just Vernon Hills?
The, this, this is for, because the, the trade area goes outside of Vernon Hills.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So, it takes in, what other towns?
Um, it, well, let's go back to the map.
Lake Forest, Lake Bluff.
It's a seven mile.
Yeah, so, the seven-mile trade area, so, I mean, it goes all the way down to Buffalo Grove to the south and up to.
Lake Bluff, Lake Forest.
Right.
You know, yeah.
So, and we had the benefit of actually working with Westfield Corporation, the previous owner, and they gave us all their sales, um, by, uh, sales distribution by zip code. And so, we had the benefit as we looked at the trade area of Vernon, uh, Vernon Hills over the years and, you know, what impact Dear Park had on it, Northbrook Court and others. So, that's a great question, but certainly, um, you don't live in a vacuum, and so, we, we look at the income levels in Lake Forest and some of those other areas in looking at per capita expenditures.
Are you going to speak the population in the, in the, up to seven miles? How many people live with, within seven miles here?
Uh, that table is kind of small, but it's usu, it's probably about three hundred thousand people within the, uh, trade area, just a moment. Just bear with me for a second.
One twenty-seven in the primary.
Yeah, can you guys read that better, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one twenty-seven in the primary, one thirty-three in the secondary, total is two hundred and sixty thousand.
Yes, thank you, so I've, so, obviously, we did that.
Further south, of course, the, the numbers will boom.
The density increases. So, we, we prepare demographics for each segment of the trade area, and just off the top of my head, usually, it's about three hundred thousand in that, that geographic area. So, we applied those per capita expenditures to the population resources within each segment of the trade area to come up with what the total potential is in each segment of the trade area. And so, you look at each category, and so, there's about three hundred and fifty-seven million in potential in the general merchandise category in two thousand eighteen, three hundred and ninety-seven million in gro, but we don't get all that in Vernon Hills. That's what's out there within the trade area. We're getting about a hundred million in grocery right now. So, we, we looked at this, and then we prepared market penetration and sales volume, and these, all the, um, calculations are here. I'm not going, the time is not going to permit us to do that, but we're looking at. But we're looking at each retail category. And we see a market for additional stores, particularly in the eating and drinking category. Things that are e-commerce resistant. And if we could get other department stores and specialty retail stores, grocery. What, this is very, this is what we use to come up with the market penetration and sales volume.
Could I, could you go back to that last slide?
Sure.
And then what was the furniture sales for Vernon Hills that-
Sure.
That was a little-
Six hundred and forty-nine thousand.
That's what I thought, so.
Six hundred and forty-nine million.
Two thousand and seventeen. Now go to the slide that we were just ending on here.
Okay. That's for the trade area, which is, so that includes sales that aren't captured in Vernon Hills. It's what is available within-
So go back one now.
Okay.
Okay, so how, how is the total trade area, three hundred and ninety-six for two thousand and eighteen? If ours is six fifty?
Well, because some of those sales come from outside of Vernon Hills. And you also have CDW and you have American Hotel Register, which generate sales in those categories.
A lot of it's outside the trade.
Yeah, so you import sales. It depends, like we're comparing apples and oranges in one sense. Because we're looking at within seven miles. Some of those sales at seven miles can go to Gurnee, can go to Deer Park. But this is if we can capture more of those sales and bring them here into Vernon Hills. But if you look at per capita expenditures in all those communities.
Well, and major furniture purchases are the kind that people will travel more than just a few miles.
Absolutely. And we're only probably allocating about eighty-five percent of all of the customers that are generated here. There's fifteen percent that come from outside the delineated trade area. People are passing through or visiting relatives here, staying at a hotel or a convention.
Eighty-five percent comes from where, within five miles?
Comes within the seven mile trade area.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
But some of them are-
Well, you're saying there's another fifteen percent outside of that.
Right.
Except for, except for certain purchases, such as furniture where we get half of it from, from beyond the seven.
Right. So, I mean, if you're going to go to Walgreens and you're seven miles away in the drugstore category, you're probably going to go to the local drugstore and not travel all the way to Vernon Hills. So even though the potential exists. So that's what our friends at Centennial are going to do, is they're going to try to make people come to the mall more frequently and enhance their market penetration in each one of these retail categories. So, you know, there's a lot that goes into this. And it's all outlined very specifically in the report. But so we looked at each category and what the penetration levels are by each retail category and what we expect to capture. So we're at about, within the trade area, about one point two billion in sales. And that doesn't, we usually don't look at the manufacturers category or the agricultural's category. So-
Yeah, okay, okay.
If you look at all the retail categories from the Department of Revenue, there's some that aren't germane to this discussion. So anyway, we looked at the vacant stores in Vernon Hills, Carson Perry Scott, Carson's Furniture, Old Navy, Petco, Sears, Toys R Us. And we provided a list of potential types of retailers that could be targeted to fill the vacant spaces. So, I mean, there's a variety of names here. I mean, Von Mauer, for example, that's a very expensive deal. But they are going to take the Carson space and Orland Square Mall and Orland Park. Fresh Farms, we knew they were interested in this market. L.A. Fitness, Patel Brothers.
Von Mauers, for example, do they expect, you know, a lot of cash to go down?
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying.
Is it still Nordstrom's is the highest?
Yes, absolutely.
Give me a ballpark on what a Nordstrom's would want from us.
I'm going to probably let the developer answer that question. But it's, it's very significant. I mean, millions and mils-
Two years ago was like twenty-five million bucks.
Absolutely. That, and so these are the trade-offs and what they're going to do to the sales productivity and market penetration of the mall. I just bring them up as they are a potential target. You know, Binny's, Beverage Zebra, Harbor Freight Tools, these are retailers that are active. I mean, if you look at Sears, many developers are adding a multifamily residential.
How about Apt or Darwin? They need satellite stores.
Yeah. They really haven't. I mean, you look at Apt, they've decided-
Darwin's down in Orland Park.
Right, and they won't open any others.
Yeah, well, it's worked for both of them.
Since you're talking about hypotheticals, everyone keeps talking about Apple Store. What, what, why won't they come here and what would it take?
Well, they have an Apple Store inside of Apt. So one of, one of the issues with electronics and appliances in this market.
In Northbrook and Deer Park.
Yes, right. But I'm just saying, they-
No, 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 no. Roger went there looking at stores not too long ago, that Apple Store, I like, oh, holy mackerel. I mean, it was like a hundred and fifty people or more in there.
Absolutely. You know, Apt probably is about a four hundred million dollar operation out of that one store. So, you know, we, we looked at various tenants. And, you know, I'm getting close to my fifteen minutes here, but-
So can you go back to that, though? I'm still curious. What, is that even a possibility?
Apple? Yeah. I think Apple's one of our targets. I mean, certainly when we get to some, these are for the vacant stores because Apple isn't a very large store.
Right.
So if you go-
What does that generate, about a thousand dollars a square foot or something like that for the year?
So, as you can see here, we have Apple at the top of the list only because it's alphabetical. But we certainly, we, we would love to see Apple. I mean, those stores can generate four thousand dollars a square foot. They're at, they're at this top of my list, four thousand dollars a square foot.
Yeah, so for the year, how much would they project out?
It depends on the size of their store. But, I mean, usually they're, you know, sixteen million dollars. But, and some of them are only like four thousand feet, if that.
Yeah, okay.
So, you know, you look at another store, that's incredible. Most of the other stores maybe do three or four hundred dollars a square foot. So, so anyway, what we, I'm going to just quickly go back. So anyway, we looked at, you know, some of the replacements for your vacant stores of size. This isn't for every little store in the mall. So there's a variety of stores that represent replacement tenants. There's other retail concepts that haven't come to Chicago yet. I mean, they may come in the future, so there's new concepts all the time. So-
Is Punch Bowl, go back to slide.
Punch Bowl Social, they're-
The other one, the Air or something?
Yeah. Yeah, these are the experiential retailers, family entertainment centers. I mean, you look at Crayola Experience, they only have one store open. But they opened in a Starwood property in Texas. And the people were coming by the busloads. Kids just loved this Crayola experience.
Was that a hotel?
No, it's a-
Starwood?
Starwood is the name of the mall owner.
Oh, 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 oh.
Yeah.
Hotel and retail.
Yeah, they do. So.
Oh, Starwood.
You know, Funtopia, you look at Round One. Round One has taken a variety of Sears stores around. They went to Fox Valley Mall. I mean, they take a lot of space. They're at Stratford Square Mall. I worked on that one, too. Woodman's is going to take the Macy's, they're going to tear it down. So, I mean, these are the main event. These are family entertainment type things that are going to bring people out to the mall. And so they are, you know, potential candidates. Obviously, the mall ownership will be talking and looking at what the economics of each one of these-
Who were the tenants in the Sears store in Oak Brook Center?
That's Funtop, Kidzania.
Kidzania?
Kidzania. So, you know, we can't put everybody and their brother on this list because there's some, I mean, when they have like one or two stores, are we going to be able to get them? You know, possibly, but it all comes down to economics.
Yeah.
So, so when we looked at apparel, I mean, with what is being proposed, this is going to be a dynamic property. From what I've seen and read about what some of the plans are, this is a textbook example. And so some of these, like, we haven't been able to get Tiffany, but I think Tiffany is something that we should strive for here as part of the redevelopment. You look at Untuckit, they're a internet-only retailer, or they had been, and now they're opening physical stores. So you look at some of the, you know, like Duluth Trading Company, Bonobos. A lot of these guys were internet-only. And so I think we can bring some of those here. You know, I talked about Von Mauer. I mean, Dillard's, if I were Dillard's, this would be the time I would come into the Chicago market. They could take the-
Where are they at, in Texas?
They're all over the country, but they're not here. The closest ones are like in Indiana. So why wouldn't, you know, and the other thing is that that's going to be a decision that the developer's going to have to make on economics and so forth. So we have a list of some of the active retailers that could be, you know, Patel Brothers just announced they're taking a Toys R Us across from Golf Mill. So, I mean, these are some of the types of retailers, you know.
What's the name of the company?
Patel Brothers Grocery.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so they've catered more to an Indian population primarily. You look, you know, Woodman's went down to Buffalo Grove. Like I said, they're going to Stratford Square Mall to take the Macy's. So these are a lot of the, you know, some of them you have already, but there's others that you don't. So you look at, like, Amazon's going to open their own grocery stores. You got Amazon Go, you know, Earth Fair, we talked about Fresh Farm, Heinens. Little is supposed to be coming into the market. So these are, you know, they might not go to the mall, but maybe, you know, there's, we think there's an opportunity here with population growth.
We could just put a sign on Whole Foods.
Right.
Right?
They potentially, they're changing the pricing structure and everything else. But they just announced they're going to come up with their own new store separate from Whole Foods.
Yeah.
So, so then we have a variety of restaurants that we think would work well here. Some of these fast casuals might work very well down at Greg's Parkway. And we mentioned Apple and Art Van Furniture and some of these other, you know, like if the mall, the things that are happening at the mall and our plan, can we get Pottery Barn and Pottery Barn Kids and these types, the RH Gallery Restoration Hardware?
Yeah, you got those in Deer Park, right? Pottery Barn, Pottery, Pottery Kids.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, you know, some of the sporting goods guys are potentially, you know, Uncle Dan's and Irwin Mountain Outfitters.
Yeah.
So we don't have Florin Decor, we don't have Harbor Freight Tools. Those are guys that take second generation space.
Like if you bring in Orvis, it's all for fly fishers.
Yeah, love fishing.
Oh, Ron Brown would vest about twelve packets.
We talked a little bit, we got ahead of it, but these are a lot of the entertainment, like Level Two Fifty-Seven that's at Punch Bowl, Social, Lucky Strike, Crayola, some of these rock climbing things, Urban Active Endeavors, Urban Air Adventure Park. So let's get to the mall. I'm sorry, this got a little long, but, you know, Centennial, what they're planning is textbook. This is exactly what other mall developers around the country are doing to address the decline with Sears and Carson's and so forth. They're adding lifestyle additions. They're adding residential integrated into the fabric of the coordinated streetscape design. I mean, if you've ever been to Eastentown Center in Columbus, it's fantastic. Creates the main streets of the past. And they're public-private partnerships with the communities. I mean, let's face it, the mall got built in nineteen seventy-two. It's been generating tax since seventy-three. You know, I mentioned Northbrook Court. I think a hotel would be great to integrate into the project. Actually, a hotel, real estate director contacted me and wants to be in this project. Simon's adding fifteen Marriott Hotels and so forth. So I think they could really add to the dynamics of the complex and provide customers. And what do people do when they stay in a hotel? They go shopping, dining and entertaining. The Macy's outlets, this makes a lot of sense to me. Three outlets along, you know, Milwaukee, excuse me, along Town Line Road. And they can generate sales of five hundred bucks a foot. Obviously, the Ring Row would have to be realigned, but that makes a lot of sense to me. The outlets along Milwaukee Avenue, again, same things. Restaurants generate about five hundred dollars a square foot versus retail. I mean, this parking isn't really doing a whole lot. It's new sales tax revenue, it's new property tax revenue to the other taxing bodies because you don't have a property tax. But there's really an oversupply of parking and that could be converted to productive use. The outlets along Greg's Parkway there, we envision like a Salada, Cafe Zupa's, Bone of Beef is very active in the market. Andy's Frozen Custard, the Learning Experience.
Isn't Cafe Zupa's already going in across the street?
Is it? I don't know.
Yeah, Melody Farm.
Yes. Hey, there's a market for them. We got them.
I don't think we need two, correct?
Okay. So we'll scratch that one. But, you know, Bone of Beef you don't have and Andy's Frozen Custard you don't have. And so we've, we have had a lot of C-store interest. It's not something that is very appealing.
C-store meaning?
Convenience store and gas station. But you look at those, and we know that there's interest in the market, but they're not, most communities don't say, oh, we want to go after a convenience store, gas station, but some of them generate eleven million dollars in sales. So you could put a Walgreens there for like six million in sales, or you could put a C-store gas station.
But we already have Buc-E's right, we have Buc-E's right across the street there.
Right.
Oh, this is for Greg's?
Yes.
Is this CK, what is that?
Circle K.
Or Hansa.
Circle K and Seven Eleven right now are going all over the metro area, adding new facilities. So, you know-
Isn't Circle K a lot with the redevelopment of some of the shelves, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Shell, shell gas station?
Yeah.
So they're, they're, they're expanding the C-store, the convenience store. And so it's, it's not sexy, but it's, they generate a lot of revenue. And there is a market for them. Whether the board wants something like that is up to them. So anyway, I mentioned in conclusion, sales are up three and a half percent in the metro area. I mentioned automobile dealers, and gas stations up five and a half percent. Things are growing. General merchandise has been weak. So here are the actual sales for two thousand and eighteen. These were, actually weren't even in the report. This just came out. And so I thought you'd be interested to see that-
Does this include the Coller Counties and everything?
This is for the, this is for the- This is for the Chicago Metropolitan area.
Okay.
Kane, Lake, McHenry, Will Cook.
The Coller Counties.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we're up four point three billion or three and a half percent. So despite all these headlines about retail is dying, this is the fact. And so I think the mall's the crown jewel. Everyone that owns a mall is addressing this Sears, Carson's issue. It's kind of invest now or pay later. We've had malls that aren't coming back. And it's going to take a partnership. I think you got to implement a mixed-use redevelopment strategy and-
Question on renters, is that doing better now?
The main street has been a disaster.
Oh.
The smaller stores in the middle. But, I mean, it's really a big box redevelopment with Costco, Home Depot on the pad.
Yeah.
They took a bunch of retailers from Arlington Heights, Sports Authority, which then closed, PetSmart. But so it really isn't, I don't think that's what we're proposing, more of a town center here. And I think that we already have your big box concentration in some of the surrounding shopping centers. So this is going to be more of a town center with apartments, retail, restaurants, hotel, entertainment to create an eighteen-hour environment where people want to live and spend time, live-work-play environment. And, you know, we really need to add unique uses. And I think what I've seen, at least from some of the preliminary plans proposed by the developer, that it's, you know, the mall is key to the long-term viability of the, of the village's retail base. We've got to look at the possibility of adding major anchors. If it isn't today, maybe it's tomorrow. I mean, my hope is that someday we're going to have a Nordstrom at Hawthorne Mall. It's, it's an expensive deal, but at some point, they're going to want to be here. If this plan's implemented, it's, we're going to create a really dynamic environment that they're going to want to be at. And we're going to add e-commerce resistant uses. And, you know, I think that you, what they're proposing is a textbook example of what developers are doing today. And they've actually taken out the playbook on how to redevelop this complex successfully.
A quick question for you, because you, you've addressed a number of the questions I had. But one question I had for you was, I mean, just, it's funny because a few years ago, when Dominic's left, we were bereft of grocery stores. And now, as they're talking about, at least based on the press release, a potential for one here, there are already seven grocery stores within about a mile and a quarter of the, of the mall now. And I just wondered- And I just wondered if, because I know that, that car dealerships and I know building near your competitor, I mean, Dave Thomas proved that was the way to go. Everybody thought he was nuts when he said, find the McDonald's and build the Wendy's as close as you can. And everybody said, what are you, nuts? But he was right. Is that, is that still viable? I mean, because it is a total of seven now, I mean, and we had nothing and now-
Right, you were doing 32 million dollars in grocery sales. We recommended Whole Foods and Aldi and some of the Mariano's.
And that's why I'm asking, would an eighth one within that range still be viable?
We believe it would be, because it's going to be a different type of grocer. Like if we polled this room about where you shop for groceries, we're going to get a multiple of answers. And so-
Well, you go more, maybe go more ethnic as well.
Can I make a comment here? Here's a store that I absolute, a grocery store that absolutely would kill it here. It's either a Super H Mart, it's a Korean store where they have restaurants within it. But there's also a store called Mitsua in Schaumburg. You go there on a Saturday and it is jam-packed. I mean, the shelves get cleaned up.
You buy groceries there.
Japanese grocery store, but it is, it's a mix. It's not just Japanese, just Asians in there. But we also have a big Asian population in Vernon Hills alone, it's 12.2%. But if you even go out to the seven, you know, the seven-mile radius,
Yeah.
there's a lot of Asians. And I know my mother lives in Buffalo Grove, she goes to Mitsua every two weeks. She has to drive all the way, you know, in golf in Algonquin.
They opened a small, it's not a Super H Mart, but the H Mart at Sanders on Milwaukee Avenue. They opened a small one.
Huge, so there's your grocery store that absolutely I believe would kill it here.
Yeah, that's why I wanted eight, yeah.
Absolutely, but it's an Asian store specifically.
What was the store at golf and?
Patel Brothers?
What is it?
Patel Brothers. They're taking the-
This was an Asian grocery store, been there a long time. Right there in, is it Rolling Meadows right around it? Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, that's actually in Arlington Heights on Algonquin.
Oh, it is, okay.
And it's an authentic Japanese marketplace and there's only like 10 of them around the country. So they draw from a very wide trade area, as you just articulated. So they haven't opened any other locations, but H Mart has. And I believe we had H Mart on the list as a possibility.
Okay.
John, can I go back?
People do go to multiple, I've taken my wife shopping on a number of occasions and we hit at least several of those seven, yeah.
Right, I mean, there's no loyalty.
Can you go back to the slide before the short-term strategy? One more, there we go. Don't mean, no, 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 that's right, that's right. So what area, this is all of Metro Chicago, so including us?
Chicago, yes.
So Chicago?
I could go to the Vernon Hills table too, but that is for 2017.
But this is include, this includes Vernon Hills?
Yes.
So how is furniture 158 million?
That's how much it went up in the metropolitan area in the year 2018. Yeah, that's the increase.
Oh, that, okay, the slide doesn't say that, doesn't say-
I know, we're trying-
It doesn't say increased by 158 million, it just says-
Because we're at 649 million.
That's my point. How could we be, I just wanted to make sure that the 649 isn't wrong.
Yeah, no, I hear you, but this is for the metropolitan area. So the metropolitan area increased by 4.3 billion and up three and a half percent. I just threw these in like last week because the data just was published by the Department of Revenue.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
No, sure, that's a great question, I'm sorry, that's confusing. Guys, I want to answer all your questions.
Well, no, no, because obviously I think what everybody wants to hear from now
Sure.
is the Centennial Real Estate Group that owns the mall.
When will we be getting the formal full report from you?
It's pretty full.
Well, no, there's 149 pages.
Well, you got it right here.
Oh, yeah, that's it, okay. Oh, you got the report, okay.
Accused me of taking it.
Provided a draft.
Right.
It gave me the same feeling.
As we said we would, and so we will finalize that report
Great.
and work with staff to do so.
And it's my understanding, Mark, or John, you can answer your mark. We're going to put the Milanese study out on our website at the earliest possible time. It might be another two weeks, but it'll be out there so everybody can parse through.
Did you look specifically at lumber building hardware and how much it's increased since Menards came in? I'm just curious.
Absolutely. Those sales are part, but it was only a partial year.
Yeah.
So there definitely has been a increase.
No, that's 17, you don't have anything-
The 18, I did not put those up yet.
Okay.
Yeah, I did it for the, they weren't out for the individual communities.
You know, except-
I know you made certain predictions before and I just wanted, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, I-
Remember when we approved Mariano's? It was based on sales of 25 million dollars.
Right.
First year they did 60 million.
Right.
You know, and that's 600,000 a year to us.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, how much, how much-
With Menards?
Yeah, I'm just curious.
It's supposed to be, I bet it's going to hit 60 million dollars.
60 million alone?
Uh huh.
You think so?
Yeah.
And how much is it cannibalizing? I understand.
With the three stores, sometimes they can be 80 or 90 million in total.
Real bad, you guys wanted it real bad.
But I mean, you know, generate, you know, 600,000 dollars a year.
I get it, I get it.
And taxes to the schools, just the property taxes, yeah, but-
I'm going to let the other guy know. Thank you.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
Those hand mics do not work at all, they're both dead.
He just does lights.
Speaking of which, there's two on my block that you need to take a look at.
He'll go out there with his charger. We ready for the next?
What, I'm sorry?
We ready?
Yeah. Does anybody have to take a break? Anybody have to go to the bathroom?
Should we, should we open it? Do you want to open to the public for questions for-
No, 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 I want them to make their presentation.
You have to know the story.
Okay.
You might as well hear the story and then we can get, you know.
Get back to, okay.
Let's do it.
Should we invite them up?
Yeah, they're coming, yeah. No time like the present, guys. So do you really need your lawyer tonight?
We just like paying him for after hours work?
That's what I thought, okay. Hell, Frank and I have history, good history. Going all the way back to when we were kind of youths. 1988, 87, wasn't it 87, 88? You know, we, finally, and you said we annexed it, 1989? Yeah, I know, because you, okay, yeah, it's great. Okay, anyway, he worked on the annexation of the whole Cuneo property where I'm sure some of the people in this room live.
Yeah.
And yeah, that was, that was special times. I mean, it was a lot of work, but it was worth it.
Test, test.
Okay.
All right. Good evening, my name's Oliver Robinson, I'm with Centennial Real Estate Company and we own Hawthorne Mall. I'm going to first introduce our CEO and President, Stephen Levin, who is not good at following scripts, but he's much more interesting than I am. So I'm going to let him talk, give the big picture, and then we'll run through some of this afterwards and answer whatever questions you have.
Stay focused on the microphone so the folks at home be able to hear.
Okay, I would, I'll do that as best I can. I prefer to look around, but so I-
The mic's not working, is it?
I apologize if I'm not looking your direction, but I'm really speaking to everybody in the room. So as Oliver said, my name's Stephen Levin, founder, CEO of Centennial Real Estate. We're here tonight, one, we appreciate the opportunity to be here to unveil to you what we believe is one of the most exciting, dynamic, engaging, immersive destinations that will be created and exist in the Chicagoland area for the next 30 years. And we're committed, we are committed, Centennial, and our partner is USAA Real Estate, USA Insurance Company, insurance company to the military, phenomenal company. We are here to show you what we are committed to deliver to the community, to the Village of Vernon Hills. Three and a half years ago, we made an investment with our purchase of Hawthorne Mall. We own the mall, but the mall belongs to the Village of Vernon Hills. That's the way we look at it. This mall belongs to the community and everything we're doing. Does this work? Does this work?
Yell into it.
It's like American Idol, you have to hold it really close to your-
You have to hold it, okay. Wow, I'm not used to doing that. Okay, so as I was saying, everything we're doing is based upon what we believe is the right vision for this project that will enrich the lives of the Village of Vernon Hills residents. We are based in Dallas, but every project we do, we are focused on the community. That's how you make it successful. It can only be successful if you embrace it, if the people that live in this community embrace it. It won't be successful otherwise. And so while John was, John was, was great and I appreciate everything you said, but was very good about the comment about the textbook approach to this. I think what I want to say and what I want to convey to everyone is that, yes, there is a textbook approach, but our approach is what's right for this community and what's right for this mall specifically. It's not just about what the textbook says you're supposed to do. It's what, it's what is going to work best here. To give you just a tiny bit of background, we, Centennial, I grew up in retailing. So I come at the real estate business, we're not just, we're not a typical developer. We're an owner of great retail projects. Because I grew up in retail, I was, I owned a retail company that had 60 stores in the Southwest and 30 were in malls. And we come at this from being, from a business that is based on engaging customers and creating experiences for people and for customers. So while Oliver's going to walk through a presentation, our vision is to create this dynamic destination that is the place for the people that live in this community to take their kids, to take their grandkids, for millennials, for school-age kids, to experience, to do the things that they do in life, to experience life. Everyone talks about, as John mentioned, everyone talks about e-commerce and the internet. And that's not what we are. If you buy your dog food or you shop, buy toilet paper, whatever you do to shop online, that's great. But that's not what this is going to be. This is, this is what you do in life when you leave your house. This is, this is your social interaction, this is entertainment, this is recreational. This is, this is living, this is all about living your life. And so the context of all of this project is based upon the fact, first of all, that we're a long-term owner. We're not developing a project to sell it. We're not here to kind of come in, we made a several hundred million dollar investment in this community. And we're going to make a several hundred million dollar more investment in this community. And that is going to take us a very long time to make sense of financially. It will not make sense for many, many years, because we're investing now for the future. John talked about a lot of tenants, Nordstrom, Von Mar, all these tenants. Those are great thoughts, but they won't come to this mall today. They will not come here today. They will only come here. Apple is a pipe dream until we do what we're going to do. Then we have a fighting chance. If we do what we're going to do and make this one of the most dominant and exciting properties and destinations and gathering places to go for all of you and all of you for the next 30 years and for your kids, for your grandkids, for your friends when they come to town, then we have a chance to get Apple and to get Nordstrom and to get Von Mar and to get the tenants and the restaurants and the businesses and the entertainment facilities, the kinds of things that will resonate with you, that you want. And one thing about us that I, I want to, I want to make this point, we are somewhat unique. We're fortunate. With USAA being our partner, we're long, 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 long term. And the benefit to that is twofold. We're making a very big investment that financially makes no sense for us to make unless we own it for a very long time. And so very few people can do that. We're very lucky to be able to have a partner like them that will invest for the future. Otherwise, you can't do it. That's why many of the malls won't survive, because there's no one to make the investment that we're willing to make. And this mall has lost 50 million dollars in sales since we bought it. And it's going down every day. And the tax revenue is dropping every day. That impacts the city tremendously, but it impacts the community. Because this is not the mall that causes people to get up and say, I want to go to Hawthorne. Like I did growing up, I lived three miles from a mall in Dallas and we got up on Saturday and said, let's go to the mall. Wasn't because we needed a pair of jeans, it was because that was where we wanted to go and hang out and do things. Well, that's what we're going to do. We're going to bring this to a place where you're going to get up and say, not just on Saturdays, but nights, weekends, let's go to Hawthorne. Because there's open-air plazas with restaurants, choices of restaurants, there's music, there's art, there's any number of things we would like to do. And we don't even know what we want to do, we don't know what restaurant we want to go to. But we're going to go because it's, it's the place that we can enjoy ourselves and we can find the things that we do want to do. And, and to do that though, going back to my second point about being a long-term owner, is that we have to make the right choices. And we're not making fast choices today. That's hard to do, it's hard to not fill it up with crap and fill it up with just the wrong people, the wrong tenants, the wrong, that's the easy thing to do, to just put income in there. But it's not the right thing to do to develop the kind of vision we want to create for the long term. And we're able to do that. We've lost a third of our income since we bought the mall, a third of our income since we bought the mall. And I mean, how many people will not only bail out, not bail out, but say, I'm going to invest several hundred million dollars to make this one of the, and I'm serious. I know you don't know me, but I'm very serious. This is going to be one of the most dominant, exciting, energy-driven, engaging places in the Chicagoland area. That's our commitment to you, that's our commitment to the community. I know there's people that say, I don't want, I don't, the residential strikes a chord with some people that we're going to bring, it's school kids or some issue about having kids that may impact the schools. First of all, those aren't the apartments we're building. We're not building apartments for families with children. That's, I understand that comment, I understand that point, but we're not building those apartments. When you're building micro units and small 850-square-foot apartments for millennials and for young people before they ever have children, that's not for families. And so we recognize the issue, but we're not building those kinds of apartments. The apartments though are a factor in creating this entire project that is a very integrated project, that creates- that is a very integrated project, that creates this destination. It's not, it's small compared to the four-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars we're going to have invested in this thing. It's a small part of it. But it's a meaningful part for the viability of the, the mall is the centerpiece. The mall is the centerpiece. We have to make it successful. Everything we're doing is to make it successful. Pure and simple. That's what we're doing. We want this to be something you're proud of. We want it to be something that the community, that the village is proud of, that people that live here are proud of and want to go to all the time. That's what's going to make us successful. And that's what we are, that's what this shows. This is a long-term plan. This doesn't happen overnight. And the last thing I'll say, and I'm sorry for, for going on and on and on, I know it's late. But, but we're very passionate about this. And I, I could, I could stand up here quite frankly for quite some time. We're very, very passionate about this project. And I can't wait to come back and stand up here with the mayor and open this project and show you and announce what we've done and what this is going to be. And I will come back for that. But we, we need the community's support. We're, we're investing a tremendous amount and we've already made a big investment in the community. And we're okay with that. We made it. When Sears closed, we bought their building. We bought their building because if we didn't control it, we couldn't do this. Somebody could buy that and come in and crap up the mall. Do something that i- is totally contrary to what we're describing. When Carson's closed, we bought that. We made two additional commitments of millions and millions of dollars to control the real estate so we can execute this strategy. And look, we hope Macy's and Penny's never go away. But we have to be prepared that this is a project over time. This is, we're doing something for the next thirty years for this community. And we want to hear from you. We put up in the mall a board, a chalkboard that says, tell us who you want here. We want it to be what you want. We can't promise you we can go out and get Apple and get Nordstrom and get these tenants. But we want to know and we want to try and we're going to try. And we're going to do everything we can. It's going to take us time to get there. But we are, we are committed to do this. And we are genuinely passionate about making it happen for the community and for the village of Vernon Hills. So we're, we're here. We're going to walk through the presentation. We're always available to come back and talk, to sit down and listen to what you have to say. We're, we're happy to do it. Honestly, I will tell you, I'm happy to come up here, happy to sit down and, and talk about it and tell you what, what we're doing. We want your input. Because again, how I started, it's your mall. It's your project. And we're just trying to make it something that you're proud of and that you want to go to. Because that's ultimately what's going to make it successful. So thank you for indulging me and letting me kind of rant on and speak. And Oliver, I'm going to give it to you to walk through the presentation.
Then Steve's not leaving.
What?
You're not leaving.
I'm not going anywhere. My flight's not till seven in the morning.
We got all night.
And I'm, if you're, you're bringing food in at some point, I'm here.
Timing wise, give me an idea of kind of what I need to be working toward.
Well, you know, why don't you go, you know, you want to go twenty minutes till fifteen after nine?
Sure.
Then, you know, we got people that want to speak.
Absolutely. All right. So just to give you a quick overview of kind of what we want to talk about, kind of as far as specifics go. You know, first of all, our request today is for approval of our concept. We're looking for approval of the conceptual plan that we're bringing to you. Obviously going forward, assuming we get that, right, that gives us a level of commitment without a lot of real commitment. For us to push forward in terms of the pretty significant dollars we start spending as we move toward, toward a real project. You know, we've, we've already expended a lot of time, energy and money into planning, you know, kind of what, what we have to present to you. And, and, you know, next steps are really taking this to the next level in terms of that planning. So we can talk a little bit about the Hawthorne Mall, kind of the approach that we have at Centennial, some of the big picture trends which, which John and Stephen already hit on. So I'll probably blow through some of those quickly because you've heard it before. And then I'm going to take you through, you know, what we're looking at in terms of, you know, the, the transformation of Hawthorne Mall, specifically, you know, the master plans, finally ending in our commitment there. Stephen mentioned some of the players, we have what we consider best-in-class partners, both as financial partners as well as planning partners, legal. We feel like we have a good team here and we're, we're very proud of the team that we have working on this mall. As far as our approach goes, you know, there's a number of kind of big picture things that we try to hit on as we plan a transformation of a mall. Everything from a distinct experience, we want to ensure that we nod to and include the community that that, that individual mall is in, as Stephen mentioned. We always want an elevated tenant mix. That is, we want to make sure that we are taking the tenancy to the next level from what's there at a given point today. And that's been addressed. Mixed use, you know, the mixed use, the importance of mixed use, as was, was alluded to earlier and as Stephen mentioned, is really something that's happening in a lot of properties across the country right now. Where there used to be this segregation of retail here, office here, housing over here. People want much more of an urban feel in terms of walkability, livability, shoppability, dining. There's a trend toward mixed use. And we feel like it's a good one and it fits well within mall strategies often, given our large parking lots that were designed thirty-something years ago that are no longer required in terms of kind of the same kind of parking ratios. We've got a lot of land that doesn't exist in a lot of other real estate. And the, the, the final one, kind of this holistic approach and embracing the omni channels, again, it's been discussed and John discussed kind of how this retail Armageddon isn't really a retail Armageddon. There's a change. Consumer behavior's changing. There is shopping online, no one denies that. But as was noted, you've got people that were online players that are opening bricks and mortar stores across the country because that presence is needed. That customer face-to-face interaction is needed. And we are working with retailers trying to, to, to bring that to fruition as well. It's important to get that, that holistic approach with retailers as part of our mall. And we're excited about that. It really has changed the, the environment. I don't want to hit too many trends here. Let's skip over these trends, but I, I think you guys will have this presentation. But there are trends going on and we feel like those open up opportunities. So transformation overview. We've been spending a whole lot of time master planning. Again, we started with the Sears site, we've obviously got the mall itself. And we have the Carson's track. So we've had a lot of things to look at. One of the things that we're going to get to later is really not as pertinent to kind of a zoning action coming up, but we want to show you what we're thinking about inside the mall as well. Because in order to transform this asset, we really have to include a change to the interior of the mall. We can't simply, you know, add different uses and add a mixed-use experience to the mall and then leave the interior of the mall as it is. There's got to be investment throughout. And we're, we're ready to address some of that and show you some of the thoughts we have as well. Enhanced dining, eighteen-hour destination is kind of something we talk about. We want people at the mall, we want to give people reasons to be there. Living, shopping, et cetera, all, all the, all the reasons to be there that we've talked about previously. You know, grocers, there's been discussion of grocer. You know, I, I think, I think the village president said it very well. You're welcome, he asked me to say that.
I'd say. He's been saying a lot tonight.
There, there's a, there's a distinguishing, I've lost the word now. You know, can, can, can other grocers survive? Absolutely, they all fit a different niche.
Right.
These grocers have different niches and there's a lot of grocery dollars being spent in Vernon Hills and around. And we believe that there's room for more grocers in the community. That's the one thing you can be sure people are going to shop at, right? All the other uses ebb and flow, people buy groceries.
And just, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just going to interrupt one thing.
Mike, you can use one of the stand-up ones.
Oh, okay. I, I just wanted to interject one comment there that was related to your comment about the H Mart and I'm very familiar with H Mart. And, and I think the point about that, which I think is very relevant, is that, is that we don't want, and again, it goes back to our overall vision, we don't want just any grocer. We don't want just a grocer because that's what you think should be here. If it's not interesting and if it's not experiential and if it's not unique and if it doesn't provide something that the community doesn't have, then we're not going to do it. But, but if we can bring you a, an international or very different distinctive grocer that provides something this community does not have, then that is, that is a difference maker. That is something that we want to do. So we're not just going to bring, you know, the seventh grocer that does the same thing the other six do. Because if it's not going to be successful, we don't want to do it either. And we, we don't want to be just like everybody else. We want to do this in a way that's going to be very unique and special. So exactly as you say, it may not be that one, but it's that exact point of bringing something that is different, that is not the same.
Well, this H Mart, for example, they sell a lot of fresh fish and all that.
That's right.
Okay. So we could have some guy in there from, like from Pike's Market every once in a while throwing a fish for entertainment.
That's.
That'd be exper, you know.
That's exactly right. And, and I mean.
I watered at the Seattle University for two years for a grad degree.
No, Roger, it's not just fresh fish, it's Asian, so H Mart's Korean, they, so.
Yeah.
Love Korean.
Yeah.
A lot of Asians, they, you know, they sort of, you know, Japanese, the Chinese, they all shop there.
Yeah, that's great. And, and a lot of this, yeah, they're, listen, we've got, we own, we own a property that has ninety-nine Ranch Market in it, which is the most dominant national Asian grocer. Not Korean, Chinese and Taiwanese. They're phenomenal and it is exciting and it's a great business to be in. So we, we get that. Our only point is, we're really, really taking our time to do this in a manner that creates something that is, that is unique and special. Not trying to bring you the seventh grocer that is of the same kind.
It's five, twenty miles to go to this store because of, you know, there's nothing around this area. Especially the demographics, you know, between North and South, there's.
Yeah, sure. And, and we saw that with this grocer that Stephen was referencing in Dallas. It had a massive following.
We have our own example right across the street here. Trathupdi, I know I'm killing the name, but it's an Indian grocer. And that is the first entity that has really taken hold in this little mini mall here. And it's serving a niche. It's serving the Indian market, but it's also serving part of the Asian market too because there's a fair crossover of some of the products they carry. So yeah, that, a, a specific market to target it to a demographic.
Sure.
Perfect. But let's move on then to the plans here, the current site plan. Everyone's familiar with the current site plan. Macy's, JCPenney on the north, the old Carson's box on the south and the Sears box to the east there. So what we're dealing with when we had, when we had to plan this out is we've got a significant grade change that goes right up against the Sears. We've also got, you know, a, a, a ton of parking. You've also got a big obsolete box that in today's world don't have users that, that use two-hundred-thousand square feet. You rarely have users that actually take a hundred-thousand square feet. As was mentioned earlier, these footprints are shrinking. So what we wanted to do was find a way to make use of the land, to engage customers, to interface with the mall in a different way, to provide something that gave Vernon Hills a Four Seasons opportunity to both, you know, use what we build on the east side as well as to, to give them a way to, you know, basically a new way to funnel people into the mall. In the end, as Stephen has said, everything we're doing is to strengthen our current investment, to strengthen the mall, to ensure it's a viable asset for Vernon Hills and a viable funding source for Vernon Hills far into the future. So here's a big picture of what we've put together so far. The laser, does this have a laser pointer? There it is. It's kind of petering out unfortunately. Sorry? Mouse. Oh, there you go. Let's address the, let's address the, the Carson's box first. Thank you. There we go, much better. So first of all, the Carson's box is a little bit simpler. We don't have as much land on the Carson's tract as we do here on.
You know what, use the mouse.
Because, the reason, the reason for you using the mouse is because it's going to be televised.
Got it.
And the people will see that where they won't see the.
Got it, got it. So the Carson's box, we have basically two new boxes planned. This is the grocer on the east side. And here, we're still talking to a number of potential tenants, but we expect this to be what we'll call the daily needs section, right? We're going to have our daily needs of residents met. We're going to give people a reason to come in. We're still going to have the experiential interplay between the mall and the exterior, a very small green space plaza. And we expect that the grocer is going to be able to basically, I'll call it seamlessly, fade into the mall. We expect there to be an interplay within the mall that connects the grocery operation and the experience of the shopper in the mall. So.
Then you'd be able to walk in the front door and walk into the mall.
Right. Absolutely, but from the mall, you'll be able to interface and see there'll be, you know, there'll be interaction there between the mall and the grocer.
How many square feet do you think that is?
How many square feet?
The bigger building.
The bigger building is about fifty thousand square feet.
Okay.
And the smaller building is somewhere in the range of twenty to thirty thousand, depending on who it ends up being.
But that might be multiple tenants.
Could be multiple tenants.
Okay.
We, we've got a couple larger tenants that we think could take the whole space. You can see it's eating up some of the mall space as well, which is very important in this day and age. We've got a lot of small shop space that isn't where the mall needs to be today in terms of small shop space. So anything that allows us to eat some of the small depths, some of the small shop space, much of which is too deep for today's marketplace is a good thing as far as we're concerned.
Okay.
Okay, then we move over to the Sears box. And the Sears box, we're trying to create a, you know, a, basically an urban environment that has food and beverage offerings, has retail offerings, has again, the living offering. Right, we're trying to create a, a, a true streetscape, an urban streetscape that basically will pull off of, off of Milwaukee. Obviously, we've been very careful to maintain sightlines from Milwaukee into the mall.
Can you go through each of those elements? Yeah, so you're over the brown and now you're.
Yeah.
Great. What each of those represent?
Sure, sure. So we have, basically the yellow here is retail slash food and beverage. Above the retail is the multifamily. We've got a garage in the middle. The lower level of the garage services retail. Upper levels would be exclusive to multifamily. On this side, the same, again, we're bounded by the geometry here of the grade change. But we've got garage wrapped with multifamily. And then we've got the retail offering along the street. We have a very small median within the street, which is, you know, something that you, 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 basically you, you want this to be very inviting in terms of people cross-shopping both sides of the street. It's a fairly walkable, very slow vehicular.
It's very, very pedestrian. Very pedestrian, a very pedestrian.
What do the folks do in the winter that live in the apartment?
What do they do?
No, as far as getting into the mall itself. Are you going to have a covered area or something to?
Tunnel?
Tunnel.
Those kind of details we'll have to figure out down the road. I doubt it would be a tunnel, but, but it would most likely be a mixture of heated sidewalks and, you know.
I'm just saying, you know, over your nagging, you know?
Right.
We had a, we had a bad winter this winter.
I know.
Does everybody agree with one, that one thing? Holy Christ, you know, it was cold. It was awful. Go ahead.
Sure, sure. And then we've got a plaza space here. This plaza space will be programmed. It will be usable four seasons out of the year. Obviously, you have very different uses in the summers compared to the winters here. But there's ways to make this programmable and usable all four seasons.
With the blue areas are what, parking?
That's multifamily.
Multifamily.
Okay.
What's on the perimeter, the lower right-hand corner?
You know, right now, this is to be determined. This is actually a plan. We just had a new plan come out today, actually. This was going to be some kind of different type of multifamily housing. To be determined, there was just some extra square footage and they filled in space. The latest plan doesn't even have this. It could be a townhome type product, to be determined.
What's the height of the buildings you projected?
So these are about four, these are about four stories.
The, the two apartment buildings?
Four stories. That's right.
Retail first.
Retail first.
So it's five, five stories.
No, the blue part is four stories.
Four stories.
The brown is one story, or two stories. Right? Parking underneath.
Yeah, it's a mixture of three and four stories, depending on.
You got a better drawing of the buildings?
We have lots of other drawings, yes.
All right.
All right, let's keep going.
One, one thing though, again, one thing I just want to point out, that just to, we're creating these outdoor plazas that are, I mean, part of what we're going to do in these projects is create art, music, you know. It's very important that, that, you know, we're going to be activating these areas both inside and outside. We're going to do something inside that's going to be unbelievably amazing in the center court of this, this mall. That, that in addition to the ability to, to have a lot of kids' areas to be playing and having wine and coffee and, and kind of a Central Park theme inside the mall. But we're going to be creating these areas and activating them with music and with art activations where we can bring the community in to do art that changes and constantly is, the schools come in and bring art projects. And we're going to have a lot of that community activity and music from the community so that it's constantly, when you're coming here, you're, you're, you're really being energized by what's going on. So I just, I just want you to kind of, it's hard to see. We've got, you know, pictures, but it's hard, hard to see.
All right. We got some pictures. We're going to try to speed it up a little bit. We've got some pictures. We had some renderings done of the plans. This is looking at the grocer. This is looking at the streetscape down towards the mall.
All right, go back to, wait, 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 go, go, wait a minute. You took us months to do these things.
I know. President Byrne told me to speed it up.
Oh, no, now you're, you know, now you're getting to the good stuff.
Yeah, but don't speed this up. Speed up the stuff that nobody wants to hear. This is, these three, go back just two more. Just take, take two seconds. I flew here from Dallas. Just take, take two seconds.
Yeah, okay. This one?
I mean, seriously, seriously, take a look. This was, this is a Carson's box. That, I mean, the transformation of this, it, it, I mean, you've got to look at it and say, what a change it will bring. This is a tremendous change, a tremendous investment being made that is opening up, creating another area that, where, where that, where the Carson's box is. So that, that, that's what that is there. Along the, you'll see along that store is all outdoor seating, all along the store, all the way till you get up into the mall, and there's some green space there. So go to the next one. This is awfully dramatic, wouldn't you say? This, this is creating this urban field, this streetscape, that is walkable, dining, sitting outside, the apartments are above. And it leads straight into the mall. It leads straight into, this is the Sears parcel. And this is, this is not typically found. I'm sorry. I, I just, again, I just want you to focus on it for a minute because this is, in my opinion, this is, you're not going to see this very many places. Not in the suburbs, in many areas, anywhere around the country. And it's a total transformation, total change. And this is going to lead to this plaza with music and with art and with activations. So go to the third one. That's the plaza. And one thing that you're also going to find here, you can see the AMC there. Today, the AMC, the AMC is, is 25, 30 feet above the Sears building. So you can't even see the AMC. You come in here, you can't, you can't see the AMC at all unless you're on the other side of the mall. This is going to create a total different vision and view. We're going to create steps, what I'm calling the Spanish steps, that are going from here all the way up to the AMC theater area. So you're going to be able to kind of come up and down from, from the theater where we've had, where Westfield built restaurants that are not leased at all because nobody knows they're there. Sears blocks the entire view and vision. So by tearing the Sears building down, you're going to be able to open up that whole side of the mall where we can create tenants and excitement and energy where the theater is now and then have really attractive steps down to this plaza area where we'll have restaurants that you can sit with music and overlook the plaza. And, and so I just wanted to spend five minutes, three minutes, because a lot of the conversation is great, but this is, is special.
You got any more pictures?
Yes.
This is the, wait, that was the existing mall. Okay.
So, we'll hit it fast.
We'll go back to the existing mall.
Here, I'm, here. You, you click and I'm.
The existing mall, okay.
Then, here's the mall today. Here's the center court of the mall today. Okay?
Yeah.
We're going to spend, thank you. I'm sorry. I just get a little, a little animated about this.
That's fair.
We're going to, we're going to spend, flip to the, to the next slide. We're going to spend, right now, we are, we are working on this for this holiday time. We're going to spend $5 million in the mall to create something that is, I don't know, you'll see it anywhere where else. And we're getting no return on that money, but we have to do it. We have to do it today. That starts the conversation with tenants about why you need to be here. Because we have to demonstrate what we're going to do. We have to demonstrate our commitment to this project. And, and this is what we're calling kind of a Central Park area where you can go, bring your kids, your kids can play, you can sit around, you can get coffee, hopefully wine, and create this totally immersive, exciting area in the mall that, that is going to be spectacular. And, and we're, you know, this, we don't, obviously, we're not, we're not here for this. We're, you know, we're doing this. We, we feel that we can't let the mall sit today. If, you know, malls in America are going one of two ways. They're going down, and they're going up only if people invest in them. If you don't invest in a mall, it's going down. And as evidenced the last three and a half years, we've lost a third of our income in $50 million of sales. So if we don't start doing this quickly, we're, we're going the wrong direction.
Any more pictures? Yeah, nice. Well, no, I mean, seriously, I mean, you know, this is what's there now. Okay.
This is what's there now. The, the, the last piece of it is really kind of the messaging, the transformation. Again, the art installations that we're working on, bringing in some local artists. But again, we just want you to understand kind of what we're working on behind the scenes in addition to what we're asking for today.
Now, you got a good picture of, or concept picture of, of the apartment?
You said, "do we?"
Well, I mean, are the.
What we included in here.
Well, we saw some of it above the retail, right?
That's right.
Okay. Is it all above the retail?
It, it's not all above the retail. Some of it that's away from the retail.
Yeah.
Is, is down to grade. What's that?
I think it bears asking to give elevations.
But we don't have elevations yet. We haven't gotten to that level of design.
No, it's a, it's a.
The, the ones away from the retail?
It's all the same building.
Townhomes?
No, 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 no. No, we're not, no, we're not building. Well, that, unfortunately, that was put on the, that, that was.
It was, it was a space filler in this iteration?
Architect put that on there. We're not building townhomes. It's apartments, two projects, one on each side over the retail. That, there'll be, there'll be apartments over the retail, but they'll also be behind the retail on, on, from the ground up.
Right.
How many resident, how many units?
It's about, what's shown is about 450 units.
Are you considering a hotel in this?
Absolutely. Where would that go?
Yeah, where would, where would you?
Well, it, it would be another phase. I mean, we want a hotel, but there hasn't been the focus and the interest yet. I mean, it's absolutely something we want.
We, we've got, we've got, we've started to get interest. Again, people have to see that we're doing this to, to get, to get really the, to, once we start this project, we are going to start aggregating, you know, because again, we don't want to just put any hotel out here. We're not just looking to sell our land or to bring somebody on here just to get it. We want to get the right hotel for this market.
And, and can we open this up to the residents that are here?
Before, before we do that, I've, we've got a few questions.
Okay.
So, so you mentioned hotel, but where?
Yeah.
Where, where would it go?
Well, first of all, you know, part of it has to do with the, the hotel and where, you know, we, we just can't tell them to go anywhere. What, we have the Carson's box that is vacant today. I'm sorry, the Carson's Furnisher Store that is vacant today.
But wouldn't you want the hotel to be attached to the mall, integrated in the mall?
It, it depends on what it is. It, it depends on what type of hotel it is. A lot of hotels do not want to be, or not, are not designed to be part of a mall. If, if it's a western high-rise hotel, that would be one thing. But so far, the interest we've had is, is not from that kind of a brand. It's from more boutique, a loft, or brands that are not connected to, to malls. And so they don't want to be. Part of it is what, you know, we can't, what we want sometimes isn't always what the market commands. But we absolutely, a hotel is, just like residential, a hotel is a critical element that we want to have at the mall. But again, it's a, it's a process of having to get the, the project to a point to where we can control more of who we want than just who's showing up.
I get that, but, I mean, I've been to the, I don't know which mall you went to in Dallas, but, or wherever you were in Texas, but I've been to the one that has a very nice mall with a very nice.
The Galleria.
Yeah, the Galleria, like a wested right there.
Right.
That's exciting to stay at a place like that where you can stay there and, and be at the mall all hours when you're not.
David, if we could get that.
Right.
You, you're, you're preaching to the choir.
Right.
If we could get that. Today, not a chance.
And I get that.
Today.
But I just want to make sure that your plans would allow for that. Because if you're thinking that they're going to be in a box in the back, no one's going to want to go there.
But, oh, well, again, today, that option doesn't exist. The options that exist today are hotels not anywhere near that, that type of hotel that, that would be, that would be on our property detached from the mall. That's the hotel opportunity today.
But in the future, if a hotel, if the concept was different and a hotel wanted to come in and be attached to the new mall, where would it be? Do you guys have a plan for that?
We don't have a plan yet. We need that hotel to come. There's plenty of places to connect to the mall. It would most likely be taking down some small shop space. It could be between Macy's and JCPenney.
Right.
God knows, we, we have plenty of land here.
It's a thing that you could, you could reconfigure the mall to allow for a hotel to go in.
We would.
We, we.
Okay.
If, we are willing to do.
Whatever it takes.
Pretty amazing things.
Okay.
And so if we get the right hotel, we're going to figure out how to get them at the mall.
Can you, maybe, can they point out where your land is? Okay, now you know you got Carson's. Now you, we know you got Sears. Where's your land for, you know, is the, you know, the fifth owner there?
I think I have a map.
Park, is there parking lots?
The heck is that?
Do you have everything except for Macy's and Penny's?
Yeah, we got Village Hall.
Everything.
This is, this is where we're at.
He has everything except for Macy's and Penny's.
What the hell is that picture?
Yeah. You know what I'm saying? In other words, where, where's your parking fields just for the, you know what I mean, that you own? Is, are they over by, between, you know, Penny's and, and Macy's or something?
It's going to be hard to see.
Where'd that pointer go? Did you?
No, it's the, it's the. I gave it back to this gentleman.
While you're, while you're trying to find that out, you've been using.
The upper level is Sears. Well, no, this is, there's AMC, right?
So, so what we don't own now?
This is.
The JCPenney tract, which is roughly here.
And then Macy's? Theirs? No, wait, but no.
We don't own JCPenney's and we'll show you that site.
No, but what, what we're talking about at Carson's and, and it's Sears, that's not 60 acres, is it?
No, 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 no.
No, because you own some additional land.
That's, that's right. That's 30 acres between Carson's and Sears.
So, so roughly the JCPenney tract? Is it roughly right here, I believe, the land comes here?
Where do you, you, no, can you go to the mouse again?
Yeah, he's looking at this.
Sure.
Out here?
I believe this is the property line right here.
Yep.
And I believe it comes right there, roughly.
So how, because you control 64 acres of land. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
Well, we.
The, the whole site's 100 acres.
We control, you're right. We, that's what we control, but the mall is sitting on.
Oh, 60 acres. It's not all 60 acres.
No, but the, we have, we just bought 30 acres from Carson's and Sears. The other 36 we own, the mall is sitting on.
Is there a camera? We can put this up here? Is it ownership?
No. We don't have much.
Okay.
Because this mall, the four anchors owned all of their parking and their land.
Well, but what you're down to is, because you own everything, you've bought Sears, you're down to, the only thing you don't own is Macy's.
Macy's and Penny's.
And Penny's and about 30% of the parking lot.
It goes with Macy's and Penny's.
Right.
That's exactly right.
They each own about 15% of the parking lot.
That, that, that's right.
Because that was going to be one of my questions. I've heard you using the term master plan. Have they been talking to us? Have you been talking to them?
Abs, we, we meet, meet with them every couple of months.
Yeah, because I would like to have all of you in the same room as we get closer to a final plan. Because if you're going to truly talk about master plan, it has to include Macy's and Penny's because they've already been talking about some stuff on their.
Well, they, they're, they're giving us their approval to do, to do what we're doing here. We, we have a good, we, we have a great relationship with them. We speak to them all, all the time. Right now, listen, this is a, what we're proposing today is, is massive. I mean, it's, it's massive to do this on this kind of a project. Because again, we have to, we have to get the mall. We're not just trying to build around the mall. We're trying to get the mall to be.
No, I, I understand.
The Bible project, and we're no.
That's, that's why I want to make sure that when.
And Macy's and Penny's.
We will have to have them in the room.
Well, Macy's and Penny's may be there for the next 10, I, I don't know. They may be there for many years. Penny's has already talked to us. Penny's, if we brought, if we had a hotel and we needed some of Penny's land, I'm telling you.
They would be willing to give up some of their land to build it. Okay.
We are the dominant, we are the one that is creating the project that is beneficial to them.
Understood.
And so they understand the investment we're making is significant to the value of their store and their real estate.
Right.
And, and so.
Can I ask you a little bit about the, the residences again?
Sure.
You, you made the comment that there wasn't a tunnel. I'm a little concerned that you're trying to sell to older people You made the comment that there wasn't a tunnel. I'm a little concerned that you're trying to sell to older people and there's no, no direct access to the interior. I mean, we, as, you don't, you're from Texas. You didn't go through what we just went through. I would, I would be a little concerned about buying in a place, you know, when I get to that age. When I get to that age, when I get to that age, that, that I... Not your age.
I just survived this.
So when I, when I, when I get to that age and, and I'm looking to buy a place that has direct access to indoor space, that I would have to trudge through the snow, whatever. Just like we were talking about the hotel, it's nice to be directly attached. So at least if you could build an underground passage for all of these residences so that you can list that as an amenity when it's nasty out. They don't have to go outside to use the indoor space and get to that kind of environment. That was just a point. I don't know how much, you know, how much of infrastructure change it would take and cost, but, but I think, I think that would be pretty significant as an attraction.
Well, you know, we're not getting to the whole issue of the financing, because we're going to...
That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother section. But I think in terms of conceptually, I think to really, to really sell it to, I mean, four hundred units to be, to say you're next door to the mall, isn't quite the same as you have direct access to the mall.
Well, that's where I was coming from, even like, you know, some kind of a covering and you put infrared heaters in there or something.
Perhaps. I mean, I guess they can do that in the wintertime if there's a direct path that they could do that, integrate that into the design plan that there's some kind of...
You know, I, I think, I guess what I, I'd say a couple of things.
Sure.
First of all, we are not, well, number one, as an overall theme, everything we're trying to do, everything we're going to do, we're, we are committed to do it the best way that it will be done. So our overall arching theme is that we're spending five million dollars to make the interior of the mall look phenomenal today. So we're not, we do have a limit, and we do have, you know, partners that there is a point at which we, we can't spend anything we want to spend. But as an overarching theme, as I said, we're committed to making this a phenomenal, a phenomenal project. So everything that you're pointing out is, is a consideration of ours as to how to make it as best as we can make it. Given the constraints that we can't spend any amount of money, so we have to, there is a point at which we have to think about the dollars that we're spending. But we are very concerned about making sure it works well and that it's integrated and it's not just putting an apartment project somewhere on our site and then not trying to address how people get to the mall because we want people to get to the mall in all four seasons and not feel an impediment. So we don't have all those answers yet.
I'd like to get to some citizens' comments before we get too late here.
Yeah, really.
Two things I want to cover. Number one, I've noticed that you've got three outlets that haven't ever been talked about before. So that makes a total of nine outlets. So just, I want to make sure that everybody understands we're looking at more additional outlets. And I don't know how many people or how many businesses will want to fill those, but that's quite a few. So you'll need to give us more input on that, but I know tonight is not that night. This is at high level. But the other, and this is a point to be made, you're familiar with the Atwood Apartments?
Yes.
Okay. And they are going to be, these apartments that you're proposing here are going to be similar or even smaller in individual size on a per-unit basis. Is that correct?
That would probably, the overall goal, absolutely. Again, it's all conceptual right now.
Right.
But we have...
But that's the direction you're heading.
That is the direction we're headed.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong there, Mr. Village Manager, but as of the last count, we're about two-thirds full. In other words, we're at about...
About two hundred units there.
That's about three-quarters full. They're over, they're over seventy-three percent.
Okay, so they're roughly two hundred units, and we have, how many children we're up to now?
Total is seven, six for District Seventy-Three, one for the high school. The one kid from the high school, his dad's the baseball coach and, you know.
Anyway, bottom line here is...
Something didn't work out with the wife.
Okay. Bottom line, so we can assuage that point clearly right up front, is that if these apartments are similar, and we're talking about basically doubling that number of apartments, going from the two forty to your four fifty, not quite doubling, we should be looking at somewhere around ten to twelve children coming out.
They're not going to be children living, and there won't be many.
I know you say that, but...
Well, there won't be, they're not built for that. Right.
And neither, neither is the existing Atwood. But with that being said, this is going to have a limited, a very limited effect on schools.
Well, how old is the Milton development?
Okay, you want me...
And that's only twenty kids out of three hundred units.
It's about twenty years old, Amely slash Milton. And the actual number of students coming out of there for District Seventy-Three is twenty-two.
Yeah.
And they pay almost five hundred thousand dollars a year to District Seventy-Three.
That's the other side of it, is returning...
Here, can we open, here, stop. I want to, I want to turn this over to the residents. Who wants to come first?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Come on. Here, why don't you just stay another night?
Come on up, Julie. Pull those mics.
Julie, you need this experience. Come on.
What experience?
I don't know. You proven any, Lurt, you haven't been in the county board that long.
I'm here as a resident.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Julie Simpson, Twenty-One Monterey Drive, Vernon Hills. Just as a centennial, I know as a resident myself, we want success. We want the revenue into our village. What's very important to us is that there are zero children. But in addition to having zero children, is Hawthorne Seventy-Three is underfunded. We need to ensure that the tax incentives, the tax incentives are very important. I get that. That's a part of it. But any, any housing, any hotel, any dwelling like that cannot come with tax incentives. The schools need the money, and the only way for them to get that revenue is that type of, of construction. And I heard the same thing, trustee Brown heard with townhouses, and that is very scary. We don't want that. Zero children is the effort. I mean, I know we might get one or two or three or four, like at the Atwood, but the Atwood isn't going to produce any revenue for twenty years. We can't have that again.
Well, let's explain the point that a school district, under the law, can actually approach us if, for some reason, there is an explosion of children. We have to put so much money aside in an escrow account. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is there a definition of explosion of children?
Well, no.
Well, in your mind, hey, what do you think?
They have the ability.
What, you think one's an explosion?
They have the ability to come in and request a redistribution of the TIF allocation, number one. Number two, there are statutory minimum guarantees that provide that the school districts are guaranteed a certain percentage of the increment in a TIF situation.
To cover the cost of the kid, right?
That is designed to ensure that they're covering the cost of educating the children. And this, to some extent, needs to be compared with the declining tax revenue that an asset like the Hawthorne Mall produces today or will produce in the future if that kind of a development doesn't, doesn't go forward and the mall ultimately dies. So those are kind of both ends of the, of the spectrum, and the idea is to find the perfect balance in between that guarantees financial security for the school district, which is something I know this board is absolutely committed to, and at the same time, balancing that so that you come out with an economically viable project that can ensure the success that the community demands.
And I'm not a hundred percent blaming the village for the schools being crowded. I mean, it's a state funding issue. I said I'm not.
Oh, just, you're not a hundred percent, though. Well, you're blaming us for something.
I mean, everybody has a small part in it. I mean, the biggest problem is probably the state. But what I'm looking for is the state.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's probably the biggest problem is the funding model. But, but as it stands right now, the only way for the school to, to add revenue is new construction without children that generates tax dollars. That's how it stands. And so it's more of a request of partnership to help solve the problem.
Did you hear the statement regarding three million dollars a year going to District Seventy-Three right now from the mall?
I, I understand.
Yeah, well, that's a lot of money, don't you think?
The school is still over, the school is underfunded.
There's no children coming out of the mall, for God's sake.
Can we, can we hear from some more residents?
Thank you.
Well, you know...
My name is Corey Groupie. I actually live at three oh nine Alexandria Drive. Your model looks really nice, and I agree, something needs to be done with the property. And what it looks like would be great. Couple of things that, as, I'm a chef. I've worked in restaurants for thirty years. This town is oversaturated in restaurants. I don't know if anybody is aware of this, but every single restaurant in this entire area is struggling every single day to staff it. There are no employees. So if you want to open three restaurants, five restaurants, ten restaurants, we don't have the people here to staff those. The restaurants in this town are struggling as it is. We have a nice day population. We're busy. They're making money at night. Everybody's struggling. It's crickets. To the restaurants that are not being, you know, not being affected by online shopping, that's actually not true either. DoorDash, Grubhub, Uber Eats, which I'm sure everybody here has used. Just to give you an idea, for every ten dollars somebody spends at any of those platforms, the restaurant pays about three dollars and thirty cents. So I don't know if anybody knows that either. So that does cut into it along with home meal replacement.
Can you explain that a little further?
So the way that those, those platforms operate, the three big ones, we'll say, there's other ones out there, but the three big ones. So say you place an order for a hundred dollars, and we prepare the food and it gets sent to your house. I pay, and say you use DoorDash. I pay DoorDash thirty-three dollars out of my money. So that's actually how it works. A lot of people don't know that. So that actually cuts into a lot of stuff. But here, with the, just the sheer number of restaurants that we have, which is nice for options, but you continue to add to them, it's market saturation. You might be able to bring in millennials and stuff like that, but millennials are ordering online. They're doing home meal replacement. You know, they, they get, was it HelloFresh and those things? But I just think everybody should be fully aware of what it is like to actually operate a restaurant. I have four restaurants that I operate, and I also feed a hundred sixty-five kids at a Montessori school Monday through Friday. And it's, we do huge volume. We are, we're a big group. But we still struggle to get by every single day. There's just not the employees. And then one other question I had to that with your apartments, are you renting those or are you selling those? You are renting them? Okay. So I wanted to know that. But anyways, I just wanted to say that piece because I don't think anybody really understands what it is to work in a restaurant, what we deal with every single day. You know, it's, it's a struggle every single day. So I just wanted to say that piece so everybody's aware.
Can I ask, you have any of your operations local here?
I've got one. I've got a couple. I've got three in Lake County, one in Chicago. I tried to want to open one in town, but it didn't work out because we couldn't get a variance for a six-by-six cooler outside because of impervious surfaces.
You came before us.
I spoke to...
The building commissioner?
Yeah. We actually, we sat down with everybody, had a meeting, and I asked...
What's the name of the company?
With who I work for? I work for O'Toole's Pub Group. But we are going to open a little barbecue place in town, and we had, the little, the breakfast place has gone in. It's, they did a great job.
Right down the street on Route Forty-Five.
We wanted to open a barbecue place, and we had asked if we could get a six-by-six platform outside the building for a cooler. And it was denied.
So the reason I, the reason I was actually asking the question was I was just curious, what, where do the employees come from? What's the draw? How far away do the employees, a lot of the restaurants come from?
I have employees that, I have one employee that lives on Mount Prospect. I have a bunch that live in Round Lake, Lindenhurst. I've got a couple from Mundeline, one from Waukegan, two from Waukegan. My Lake Villa Restaurant has people from Round Lake, Gurnee. My Gurnee Restaurant has Waukegan, Gurnee, Round Lake. That's pretty much where we're pulling from. Yeah. So.
Before you step away, could you spell your last name? And we'd ask everybody else that comes up to please spell their last name. Speak slowly so that the people who prepare the minutes are able to...
Tell everybody when the next meeting is, too, you know.
Sure, yeah. Last name is Groupie. It's G-R-U-P as in Patrick E.
Thank you.
Sure. Sure.
Yeah, right. Yeah, he's right. Kick us out of here. Hello, everyone. Michael Schenk, five eighty-seven Central Park, S-C-H-E-N-K, resident. The plan, you know, you have to evolve to survive. I think everyone in this town knows that. I think everyone in this town knows at the mall, I'm not going to use the word dying, is just, as you said, down, I think, a third in sales. It's, it's not really a destination. You know, I applaud you to coming out here and trying to make it a destination. I do have a concern. I know Julie, the first person who spoke, is, is potential of an increase in enrollment in our schools. I don't know if you've done your homework. I don't, I don't think you've reached out to the school boards. I think you should. To understand where we're at with our enrollment. You had said, Levin, correct, Mr. Levin? Mall belongs to the community. Enrich the lives of Vernon Hills residents. Focus on the community. You need to reach out to the community more, town hall-type meetings to get suggestions from the community. It's important. I don't know how you can ensure that families, as you're writing here, you wrote, I'm not sure who wrote this, "The luxury apartments would be marketed to young professionals and empty nesters." As something that offers an urban living experience with space to live. Okay, how do we ensure that there will be no families with kids going into the district? We are busting at the seams. I'm not going to talk about or rehash what's been going on over the last year, but I think you should reach out to the school board to really understand, to make sure that those outlets do not become townhouses, that the apartments do not become more than, what you're saying, eight hundred and fifty square feet, which is like a size of a large hotel room. Okay? The other thing, like I said, you have to evolve. I'm all for new stores and restaurants. I think everybody wants a fresh change. But there is a point. I am in the restaurant business also. The labor market is terrible. Unemployment is low. We can't get anybody to work reliable. It's an issue. And I know it's happening in retail, so you have to be careful with that because we don't want to see places fail. Nobody in this town wants to see Toys R Us go out. Nobody in this town wants to see a restaurant that they used to like go out of business. It's very important you get in touch with the community in the town hall type of fashion. Maybe it might spark some other ideas for Phase Three or even in Phase Two. Thank you.
Good evening. Carl Borchers, two seventy Danbury. That's B-O-R-C-H-E-R-S. Thank you for coming here in person. I echo the compliments from the rest of the residents here. I had two separate questions. One, in relation to the overhaul, I'd like to hear a little bit more about the environmental impact, what you're doing to the mall from a long-term perspective, whether it's LEED certifications or other things you're doing in this overhaul that might be more sustainable as you talk about being a member of the community and thirty years down the road, and especially appealing to the next generations that want to make sure that we're doing things that are, as, you know, to use the terms carbon neutral, or what are we doing to make sure we're making a right environmental impact to our community? And then the second thing I'd hear a little bit, like to hear a little bit more about is, as you talk about engaging and bringing energy, is if you've pursued or had any interest from organizations that would create entertainment space within the mall development, whether that's for musical acts to come through on a regional basis, or comedy, or small productions from a theater perspective, just to see if that... just to see if that's another opportunity to draw crowds into the the mall setup so that, you know, people go to the restaurants, people do some shopping, they go see a show in addition to the movie theater. So we'd just like to hear some more thoughts about both of those elements when you have a chance, either tonight or in a follow-up session. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kim McCauliff, M C A U L I F F E, Six Malvern Lane, Vernon Hills. Actually, had no intentions of getting up here tonight and speaking at all. But I did want to expand on something that Mike had said. You know, one thing that you guys had mentioned, it really struck with me too, was the comment about this mall being about the community. And Mike had talked about you guys ensuring, you know, reaching out to the community, reaching out to uh the school board. I don't know if you saw, there was a group of kids here tonight, and these kids were actually planning on coming up and speaking. They had prepared speeches. You know, I don't know how many times you've had to, you know, come and present to a town before, but I don't know how many kids you've probably had, you know, ten-year-old kids who have prepared a speech uh in front of a village hall like this. And I think that's something that's probably pretty unique, so I would definitely encourage.
You want to bring them back next time? This isn't the last time we're going to be talking.
No, I know, but I'm just, you know.
This is strictly a catch-up presentation, you know.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that it probably would be beneficial to have some sort of a town hall, have you guys come back where even more residents can come and the kids and have the opportunity to share their thoughts. So just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that there were kids here who are ready to speak on behalf of their community, and I think that's pretty neat. So, thank you.
Okay.
Hello. James Gubbins, G U B B I N S, four thirteen Larchmont. And I've actually lived in Vernon Hills my entire life in the same exact house at four thirteen Larchmont. In fact, I have pictures of my parents holding me on the second floor of our house under construction, and the only thing that you can see are cornfields and Hawthorne Mall. Okay? So Hawthorne has been a part of this community since I've been here, which is forty-five years. And I'm going to piggyback on what a lot of other people have said. This is a community. And I don't know that you've actually talked to anyone in this community to find that out. Because we're a family community, and we're a tight-knit family community. And you're talking about bringing in millennials and empty nesters and whatnot. That's not what our community is about here. And it's great if they want, if they want to come in and they want to live here, that's fantastic. But the fact is, people come here to raise their families. And I think that's what a lot of people are concerned about when we're talking about adding more housing. We just passed a referendum because our schools are busting at the seams. Okay? And I'm very concerned about that. I have a parent, I'm a parent of two children in our school districts, and I'm proud of being a parent of children in our school districts. But the fact of the matter is, we're all very concerned about adding to the community if we're bringing in more children because we are busting at the seams with our schools. We're building onto our schools now, as you heard from from the high school today. We're adding constantly, and that's increasing our tax dollars, and I'm afraid that soon I'm not going to be able to live in this community that I've grown up in my entire life. That's all I have to say.
Can I rebut just one piece of that, James? Because, and I've known Jim for a long time, played golf with him for years. I'm an empty nester, and I'm part of this community, and I was an educator for thirty-some years. I was on this board when we built Greg's Landing. And we've been pretty good about the estimating the numbers, and and this is not an estimation. We're basing some of this on what's already here. The two hundred and ninety-four units at what used to be called Amely is now Milton, is only twenty-two kids. The two hundred-plus units at at Atworth is only six. So I think we're, and 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 people who were at early meetings when Atworth was being talked about, I estimated Atworth was going to be about three times what it has been. And everybody said it was going to be seventy or eighty or a hundred kids. Those were the numbers being thrown around. And and I just want to say, we're 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 only in the beginnings on this, and believe me, th- this is one chair that's going to be making sure that this doesn't do anything detrimental to the school districts because I've given that school district thirty-two years of my life, so, and I'm still going there on a daily basis. So it's, it, we will be covering that, I guarantee it.
And I understand that. I certainly do. And and my point was not empty nesters or anything. I want you to understand that as well. That's not where I was going with that at all. But for the majority, we are a family community.
Yes.
And what what I heard during this presentation was three different things. I heard empty nesters, I heard multifamily, which scared me a little bit, and I heard millennials.
Yeah, and multifamily, multifamily just means multiple units in a building.
Which is fine.
Yeah, that that's all, that's all that multifamily only means, that it's not a single-family home. You have, you have three different, basically, you have zero lot line, which is two homes that are attached. You have single-family homes, and anything else becomes multifamily, as soon as there's multiple units in a building.
I appreciate that clarification as well.
Yeah, just, and that's, that's what, the the term multifamily is, gets misunderstood real easily, yeah.
One other point I'd like to tack on is that part of the issue, and I believe it's a significant part of the issue with regard to the schools, is that we're coming of age. Uh, and by that I mean that uh Gross Point Village, Hawthorne Club, uh although they're not in um District seventy-three, but uh Stone Fence Farm and Centennial's in seventy-three though, right? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
But they're they're all coming of age. I'm the original owner of my home. I live in Hawthorne Club down the the street here. I am the only retiree, although I'm not truly retired, but I I'm relatively speaking, I'm sixty-eight years old, just in case anybody's keeping track. And I'm the only person of that genre, that age group, that really is living on any of the blocks near me. Everybody who was of my age group, the Goldmans to one side, and the Patel's on the other side, and I can go on and on. They had their kids, they moved out, and there was a lull period. Uh, and now we have a whole new series of residents. I have two kids to my right, I have three kids to my left, there's two more on the other side, and on and on it goes. Because we've reached that point where these communities have reached that age where the people that were the original buyers who bought in their thirties and forties are now moving on, and in many cases, moving into apartments like these folks are talking about. And that is, those homes are being backfilled by young folks, like the people in the back and along the back row there, and hither and yon here, that are having two, three, four kids. And there was a whole process that just got overlooked uh after Yom Tum left. As part of that uh plan that he put in place that was supposed to be the ever, the the end-all, be-all, and now all of a sudden, and then followed by the Zook administration, and and now our poor school board, who none of these folks have been in place really for more than six, eight years, they're all kind of, holy cow, what did we fall into, and how do we have to deal with it? But it's that generational change that's occurring, and it's occurring in Deerpath too. Deerpath isn't that much older than the Hawthorne Club and the other.
Deerpath is a lot older than Hawthorne.
But maybe it's going.
I live where about two blocks from Gubbins.
Yeah, but.
My my house was built in nineteen seventy-six. Yours is no sooner than nineteen eighty-nine.
Correct. Eighty-eight, eighty-nine. So maybe, maybe you're on the second changeover in in Deerpath, but I I guess that's.
Start talking about our neighbors. Christ, I got fifteen kids on my street.
Right, right.
You know?
But but.
Well, you know what? I'm glad somebody will buy my house and I can move, you know?
But that also goes, but.
But that's, that's part of the natural laws.
I understand, but.
Nobody's going to stop procreating.
But hang on, that that goes to Mr. Gubbins' point, that also goes to Julie's point. Even if this doesn't bring in that many additional students, we still have to make sure it financially helps the school district because even if we don't bring in any more new kids, there are kids already there. So so we, trust me, that's one of the things, at least from this chair, that we're going to be paying strict attention to because because I understand that situation is there. I deal with it every day over there, so.
Yeah. And and Mrs. Patel, would you like to speak to the additional five hundred kids that are now part of District seventy-three? And where they came from? Or you don't?
It, but it doesn't make any difference. They're there.
Wait, I know that. But I mean, in essence, I mean, they didn't come from new housing.
Eighty-one did.
Yeah.
In the last fourteen. Eighty-one kids out of the last fourteen years.
Yeah, last fourteen years. So where they coming, where they coming from?
But we still have to account.
Because a lot of stuff's been built for years, decades, you know?
I think I, oh, sorry, I.
What's that?
Student migration.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's your number one.
Yeah.
But the housing has passed, you know, just, I mean, just keeps adding to the pot. Student migration, according to Gassar, the demographer here, recently told me that that's the number one reason for increase in student population.
So, okay, so you're still going to explode in numbers if we don't build anything? No, no, I mean, if nothing else is built.
Right, and that's, and that's one of the goals. And again, that's what I'm talking about. One of the goals would be to have this be the kind of thing what what Ms. Simpson talked about was exactly right. It's got to be uh something that it brings in additional tax dollars.
And that's positive instead of negative.
So that, so that what it can do is bring in significantly more than is being expended on the students to help pay for the students from the other places that are that are there. Because, right, and because the the people that you're talking about with your demographic study are the people that are the best in the business. Because I've dealt with them many times. They're out of North Carolina, and they're, they're always right on that, on on their numbers. And that's, that's where I'm getting, a lot of my history with this kind of numbers and that comes from the same people you're talking about because Hawthorne has used them on a number of occasions, and they're, they're very, very good.
So because the schools are great in this town.
Everyone wants.
The schools are great in this town, so guess what? You put your house on the market, and people want to move here, and they might be young people, and then they're going to have some kids. And and me, an empty nester, moves out. Is it, how are you ever, you're not going to change that. Unless we let the schools go in the toilet, and we didn't, because we all supported everybody up here, the forty-eight million dollar referendum.
I think the community.
You know, some of this is, they they're talking about doing a two-hundred-million-dollar improvement. That won't help the town. You're right. You got to be kidding.
I don't, I don't think that anyone's saying that. I don't, I don't think anyone's saying that. They just, they just want to make sure that.
They'd be happy right now if they, we just said no housing, right?
I don't, I don't think so.
That's not what, that's not what, I don't think that's what people are saying.
No, I don't think.
I don't think, I don't think that's what, the housing, they have to be very cautious of what they're building to understand the impact, what potentially that housing could add. That's all most of us are saying. Nobody wants a farmland back.
I I think they got that. I think.
I think they're, they, they want us maybe more of a guarantee that it'll be like a fifty-five and up. Because when you say, oh, kids won't move, but there's no guarantee that they won't.
But historically, they haven't, and that's, and that's what I'm basing it on.
If I recall, I think it was November when, on the first phase, you had expressed senior housing was something that they want, and they came not with senior housing.
Oh, no, they're, this is talked about being, aren't you talking about some of this potentially being fifty-five and up? No? None of it?
If you can look at it, absolutely. But it has not been focused from the groups we talked to. Our initial market study said.
Mike, microphone.
The initial market studies did not support it.
Just as fifty-five and up, but but did the, did the market study show mostly truly millennials and people without kids? Is that what you're truly looking at?
Yes.
So it doesn't really matter to me whether they're over fifty or they're, or they're twenty, as long as it's not.
Well, millennials are having kids like thirty-five anyway.
Right, exactly. So it's, well, right, as long as it's not big enough to really support.
It just needs to be noted.
To support eight-year-olds to twenty-year-olds.
Right, and.
There's no, there's no lawns there, there's no backyard, there's no swing site, so there's.
People will always migrate to good school districts.
Right.
The question is, is, will the benefits outweigh the cost? There's no way to guarantee without discriminatory housing practices
Right.
that people with kids won't be there, that kids won't be there. The question is, what are people with kids looking for? And do the benefits outweigh that? When I say the benefits, I mean the benefits not only to the community, but I mean specifically property tax dollars that flow directly to the school district. Does that outweigh the cost, which is, there may be a few kids to educate.
But you guys need to educate on our specific case in our district. I think you guys need to do that. And 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 one, I'm going to say one last thing and I'm done, but I, the referendum would not have passed without everyone's support on this board too. So we, that's fully acknowledged.
But you you should share with these guys, how many towns can we service?
Yeah.
In Hawthorne District seventy-three. And who generates the most tax?
Well, Vernon Hills it does.
Obviously.
I'm not, like I said, we, the tax revenue coming out here is well-needed everywhere. You know, the sales tax and the property tax.
I was just saying, you get eleven hundred kids out of Mundeline, how much taxes do you get? You got to know that.
Right.
You have to know that.
That's part of the reason we're kind of in this.
You're the president.
Kind of the reason why we're kind of.
You know what I'm saying? It's like, geez.
We're getting off track. We're, we're.
Well, no, we're not. You know, crazy, you got to, you know, I'm going to stop people from selling their houses.
There's a lady here.
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, I mean, I just, yeah, it, those are the natural laws. I think Clarence Thomas said that.
Hi, I'm sorry, I'm not a great speaker.
Could you move the microphone closer to your mouth?
My name is Nina Titova, on Montgomery Lane, T I T O V A. I kind of hoped that somebody else would bring this matter, but I'm not a great speaker. Uh, I actually want to support somebody else who told, like, maybe you should be more open to other suggestions because I'm looking at what you're doing, and it's going to benefit you and us as a community. No question here. It's, it's, it's going to be better than it is now. But I'm kind of hate to bring it to you. People buy groceries online more and more. We kind of trying to save our time, to spend it more with family or somebody, something else. And grocery stores in a town that already has six or seven, right, great grocery stores. And we were talking about, okay, we're gonna attract people in five-mile radius, seven-mile radius. But uh, nobody's gonna go, even if it's Mitsuba, we're lucky if it's Mitsuba because they have less than ten.
Mitsuba.
Mitsuba is Asian market. It's, it's famous Asian market, yes. We're lucky. But if it's something like any other store, nobody's going to drive here and is going to park here for groceries. And um, what I'm trying to say, people are paying for experience. They gonna drive somewhere for experience. Like, for me, I'm a mother of two kids, okay, there are a lot of parents. We're going to Children's Museum, to Wisconsin, Chi- Chicago, Aurora, whatever. Sixty-minute drive, not a question. If, if there are no children museums, they, there's, in Glenview, calls children's museums, it's kind of old and outdated, and everything else, it's one-hour drive around. Bring something for kids. So parents from all the Chicagoland would drive here. Go big, go bold. It's, it's free these times. Google it, call California, call New York, like, whatever they have, guys, what do you have? And it's going to be something different. Right now, you're doing exactly what they're doing at um Northwood Court and whenever else. We're going to put more housing around, and we're going to put like grocery store. It's the same. What is going to be different in our mall? What's going to be different from other malls? So it's like, um, maybe not, not, we're not criticizing you, but maybe if you're open to suggestion because we know what's going on over here, and there, yes, it is a family community, a lot of kids here, but you want to bring people from other neighborhoods. And yes, housing, I'm, I'm not afraid of millennials. They're going to fall in love, they're going to have kids, and then they're going to come to those meetings to complain. This is how it works. Um, so, but those people, those millennials, or first of all, it's like senior communities, that's millennials, you have to choose because you know, it's going to have better reputation. Millennials want a party, people overseas, they're going to be in bed, like watching Netflix, done, and seriously, it's, you have to work on it. I used to live in apartment complex, I know how it is. So we're not made of money. They not going to be made of money. It's not like even, um, if it's so close to mall, it's not like they're going to go out every night. That's why I'm talking about something that gives people an experience. And if it's children museum, it could be after-school program, or summer camp, or families with children. This, those are people we're going to spend. or summer camp, or families with children, this, those are people, we're gonna spend more money than some empty nesters. Yes, they're gonna have fun, but we, we cannot go and buy dress or dinner every night, this is, we, we need to drop some people from other, I don't know, from Wisconsin even, and another thing.
Do you like the chances?
I do. For a few reasons, yeah, uh, and another thing, no, I mean, it's, it seems like far away, but we're going there to their museums. Do they come here? Maybe Chicago, but what, uh, another thing, even, like, there was a, a kind of mistake with the Melody Farm, I'm sorry. We got the parking lot with, with a restaurant on the side, it should be other way around, and in your project, in your slides, I see the same problem, same problem, uh, I understand it's just some slides, but the thing is, like, cars going on the street, people are crossing, believe me, I went to Melody Farm three times, and I, I'm holding my kid, because drivers are frustrated, they cannot drive. Pedestrians are frustrated, they cannot cross, it's stop everywhere, people here and there, and cars, and it's frustrating, you want, um, I wish every developer would learn from IKEA, you want us to spend money, keep our kids busy, like, you see, you show this green space, okay, it's just commercial, when there is a kid running around this green space, there, it's not gonna happen, there should be something for kids, so they could be busy, uh, and inside the mall, it should be great idea, I love it, yes, we can have wine or coffee or whatever, if kids are busy, we can shop, like, one parent watches, yes, one, you, this is at the end, you want us to spend more money, you want us to spend more money for taxes, right? But we cannot spend our money if we're holding our kids with our hands, like, okay, there are cars, and you know what, nothing to do, and that's it. Just keep them busy, like IKEA does, so we can go there and buy furniture. So, sorry, that was about it, and if green space, it should be green space pedestrians, uh, it should be place for pedestrians, not like here parking, here parking, here is table from some restaurant, here parking, I, I, I don't see how it's gonna be pedestrians, family-friendly. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
You did pretty good for somebody who is afraid of public speaking, you did real good.
And I, I just wanna clarify something, because I didn't wanna sound like I was making up the senior housing, it's right in your presentation, the project development thing, that some of it may be dedicated to senior housing? Oh, okay, I just, when you said, okay, but when you said no, when I said that, it sounded like I made it up, and I, I just, I thought I'd seen it.
For all, all the people.
Yeah, okay.
This is a CATSA presentation.
Yeah.
And we're not even.
Got a long way to go.
Long way to go.
Long way to go.
You know, I mean, so, anybody else wanna speak tonight? Sure. Yeah, you know, you know, hey, why not?
Hello, Andrew Davis, D A V I S, thirty-five, Montebello Drive, and I have no idea how I'm gonna follow that act. Uh, I am a father of two kids, a third on the way, so I'm contributing to the overcrowding, I apologize.
Hey, you know what?
Thank you for taking ownership.
That's right. Well, I, I had to give Dr. Oppenheim more business, that's the truth.
Thank you, thanks for the plug as well.
No problem.
Teachers like you too.
I'm right off of Milwaukee, and.
I'm not gonna hammer on the, the school district considerations, because that's been well-discussed as it is right now. What I'm gonna bring up is, I actually lived in Columbus, Ohio for four years, so I'm actually very familiar with Easton Town Mall. Something that was brought up during the presentation was that you wanna make it a destination which attracts people not just five and seven miles out, but twenty miles out, right? That, that was, I believe, a component of the presentation, and what I would like to point out is that, when I lived in Ohio, the idea that there were apartments or additional local people living at Easton wasn't necessarily a draw to someone like me who lived in the northwest side of the city, there would be times when we would decide to skip, for those familiar with Columbus, there's malls basically at the four corners of the town, um, we would skip going to a Polaris Parkway or a Tunnel Crossing, which are some of the main competitors of Easton, and go to Easton because it did have some interesting food options and, and retail options, but it wasn't necessarily because of the overall atmosphere, there was different experiential opportunities, such as like the Funny Bone or other comedy clubs, I believe there's, there's a Dave and Buster's, which we already have, but I guess my point is, is that how essential, since this is a conceptual meeting, how essential is the concept of adding residential space versus other potential opportunities? Is it requisite to making this a success, and the reason I ask is because we're talking high-level concept, just because it is a quote-unquote textbook approach, does that mean it's the only approach or the right approach? Or is there a novel or other alternative? I'm not necessarily saying I'm against the housing, assuming it could be, you know, millennials or, or fifty-five and up, where it's low amounts of children, it's just, I'm curious, what are the alternatives that could exist that could still be economically viable? That, that's more what I'm wondering, so, thank you.
And, and one thing to keep in mind as we talk about this, in terms of dollars for a school district, hotels are the best, because their, their value per square foot is the highest with zero children. Then second is high-end residential, because, again, dollars per square foot, actually at the bottom is retail, because all, all the value of retail is, is the shell, because everything inside of it is, is, um, is, is not taxable in terms of, of rest, of property tax, which, again, going back to what was said by Ms. Simpson, is, property tax is the problem. But with the system we've got now, the, the residential, actually, if it brings in no kids, or brings in few kids, is actually a cash plus, uh, for the district, and, and that's what, that's one of the things I'd like to be shooting for, in terms of the residential.
I'd like to redraw the boundaries and be included in the high school district. Eighty-million-dollar surplus, and, and we were running, what, we had about six million bucks before the referendum? President, you can answer me one night, one of these questions, we didn't have any money, you know? So, so, you know, I mean, that's part of the issue, you know, and we got forty-five hundred kids.
Right now, I mean, um, the Sears property, what was your, uh, tax liability reduction that you got from the assessor?
Don't remember offhand, but we got a reduction, and it'll continue going down as long as it's bigger.
Yeah, right.
And the same with the Carson's property, so, uh, school district, right now, if we do absolutely nothing, is gonna lose a significant amount of the, the, uh, the real estate.
If it's three million, yeah, you might be losing a half million bucks.
Mayor?
Yeah.
When, when this topic came up about a month ago, I checked with the Vernon Township Assessor.
Right.
Who indicated that, um, when boxes go vacant, um, typically, you expect to see about a fifty percent reduction in the assessed value of that property, kinda right off the bat.
Yeah.
So, if that's the case, that translates into fifty percent reduction in those tax dollars as well.
Maybe the Libertyville Township Assessor is a little less lenient. We can all.
Across the board.
Yes, understood. And this, the, the purpose of this meeting really was to establish whether or not there was a satisfactory amount of information provided to allow the, the petitioner, and it's at his discretion, discretion, whether or not to go to technical review. And I think if there's no one else wishing to speak, we probably need to, uh, form a consensus here.
Yeah, we don't vote even on, on going to, uh, technical review, so.
Right, we're not near there.
So I'll poll, doctor, I'll start with you.
Well, do we have any more citizens?
Yes, does anybody else wanna speak?
We're gonna be back here about eight more times.
And by the way, this is our town hall, and we're having a meeting here, so, in a way, it's a town hall meeting, we, anytime we have committee of the whole, it, it's, that's our town hall meeting, any, anything that ever comes before this board, that's the reason we do it, as a committee of the whole, as to a lot of, as opposed to other communities that have a finance committee, and a building committee, and this committee and that committee, we do it as a committee of the whole, so that the entire board can hear the same presentation, and can hear all of the citizens' comments on anything that comes before us, that's why we do it in a committee of the whole fashion.
Every, every meeting that we have, a resident is allowed to come up and speak if something's not on there, every meeting. So please keep them on.
But when agendas come out on Friday, and the meeting is held on Tuesday, you think all these people were here because they scoured the agenda on Friday? No, there were email blasts, there were announcements, there were phone calls that went out, just get this. That's why a town hall meeting, well-prepared, well-broadcast, will get you the kind of input, rather than a Friday agenda and cross your fingers, nobody shows up on Tuesday.
Well, we, we mentioned that this was gonna be up.
This wasn't gonna get approved tonight, Dan.
At our, at our last meeting, we mentioned it.
This is a CATSA presentation, you should know that.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, Don.
Because this is just the beginning.
Don, why don't you come up, so, so people can, since you wanna.
Jesus.
Introduce yourself, since you're making comments.
Totally, totally agree with you.
Yeah, I, I, the point I'm making is, this is a generational improvement, this is, this is something that is going to last and be with the town for a long time, thank you, Mr. Levin, for coming all the way from Texas.
Like with the mall, it's been here fifty years.
But this improvement.
Right.
I know what the improvement you're talking, yeah.
But, but my point is, it's important enough that rather than to put an agenda out on Friday and say, well, on Tuesday, that's your chance to, to come out, you know, something a little well, well-thought-out, broadcast, maybe an opportunity for an even larger crowd. Uh, you put together, you know.
Yep.
A true workshop, and I'll help you get lots of people.
Really?
If that's what you want.
And we did that, we did that for the, we, we did that for.
I think that's best.
For the shops at Greg's Landing in front, we had, we had a, we had a special meeting, and we talked about.
Special meetings, and if you wanted.
Bring heaters.
It'd be warmer than here.
Okay, but in all honesty, we, we will have multiple meetings, okay? And we will have multiple, so now, the people that came here tonight, that's why we asked for their names, Don, so we'll tell them every time these guys are ever coming back before us.
Well, and we do announce.
And you should understand that.
No, I'll help with that.
No, no, but you understand what I'm saying.
Roger, Roger, I, I, let me, let me, let me say something, because I've been getting a lot of feedback from the community as well, look. It wouldn't hurt, if that's what they want, we'll get the high school auditorium, we'll say, this is the date, I'm sure Centennial will be more than happy to come in and get feedback from the community, yes or no?
A hundred percent.
There you go, Roger, at, he, Don's right, you, you can't expect sending out a notice even on Facebook a week before, let's, let's send it out a month in advance, I, I bet you we could get a big crowd, and let's just get the feedback, it cannot hurt. Forget, I get this.
Did you get any feedback today?
Roger, again.
You didn't get any feedback?
No, not enough, I want some more.
But we could get more.
Yeah, okay, I'm, you know.
So I wanna give a month advance notice, I wanna get the auditorium at the high school, Libertyville did it when they had a big building project on Butterfield, that they got shut down, okay, but they gave advance notice, I, if, if Rick Cambrik was here, maybe he'd put it in the paper, let's give an advance notice, and let's just, let's just have a town hall meeting and have Centennial come in, and let as many of the commu, as many people from the community come in, it cannot hurt.
Yeah.
You, you want to disarm all your critics.
Exactly.
Who would say, this was, this was done, you know, behind closed doors, yada, yada, yada.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Do you ever disarm all the critics on anything?
No, but something like this.
Does now, does now, is Hawthorne, Hawthorne, I mean, uh, Greg's Landing love Menards now?
Let's, let's not.
Let's, let's, let's move on.
Let's not go to that topic.
So getting back to my point.
It's great there's sixty people here, there's only about twenty-seven thousand people in town, just remember that.
I get it.
No, you don't.
I do, Roger, but the thing is, we, we get enough feedback from, you know, on texts and everything, yeah, that would be a great idea, I think more people would show up, and Don, as president of HOA, you're gonna, you know, we'll see.
We'd text it Facebook between a couple hundred people.
Look, if we give, if we say we're gonna have a meeting in May, Roger, let's just.
And you'll get people that are the most passionate about it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
There's, there's nothing to be upset about or to argue, the point, there's no reason not to do it.
Yeah, there is no reason.
No, but, you know, if, 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 if something has to be discussed, we can discuss it, and, and you know what? We have, and we could share this with the, uh, all the residents here, the papers we have in our hand.
Right.
And we'll put this online, everybody can copy it, and it shows how many kids coming out of every subdivision we approve, what was this, ten years?
Right, I think they, they got that point, they got that point. I, I think they did get that point.
You know?
I think they got that point, but I, but I.
The district's only problem isn't just Vernon Hills, without Vernon Hills, there would be no money in that school district. Anybody disagree with that statement?
It's, it's, it's irrelevant to what we're talking about.
Yeah, I, I'd like to go back to where I started a few minutes ago, so right now, what we received tonight was a very, this was, this might have even been outer space, I mean, it was at the hundred-and-fifty-thousand-foot level, it wasn't even the fifty-thousand-foot level. You guys have got a lot more homework to do, with that being said, that's part and parcel of what technical review is. And technical review is where our staff starts looking at what they're talking about, what's feasible, what's not feasible, what's within, uh, the scope of our codes, uh, what's outside the codes, what requires, uh, special approvals, uh, variances. A lot of this is gonna require variances just of the nature of itself, and that'll all go through public hearings via, uh, planning and zoning. But before we jump the gun to a town hall, I'd like for staff to start with the technical review.
Right.
If we have consensus amongst the board here, that this was a sufficient amount of information provided to us to give our blessing, so to speak, to move forward, with that being said, they don't need our blessing to go to technical review, it's on them, it's their own.
So everybody who doesn't wanna weigh in on, this is a good thing to do for the town.
Well, no, at this juncture, I, we need consensus across the board.
You think they should go to technical review? I was just gonna poll the board like we always do.
Poll the board.
Yeah.
Okay, doctor?
I'll start, well, I, I certainly appreciate you coming up here, and, and I'm thrilled that you want to invest in the community and into the mall, because without it, we all know what would happen, um, I do have some concerns about the layout and a few other things here, but, but I'm all for you doing whatever you can to, to make this not only viable, but an exciting facility for the next generation to come to, so I really appreciate that, um, so we just need, we need some more details and, and tweak certain things, and, um, and make sure, you know, make, make sure even what you're planning is, is viable, but, uh, thank you for coming.
Yeah, it, number one, this is private property, it's your property, uh, so, you know, you are the, the key stakeholder here. With that being said, you know, you've got a lot of good feedback tonight from these good folks that showed up tonight, and I'd like to see, again, more meat on the bone, but that'll occur as part of technical review, and prior to going to planning and zoning, I think that would be the perfect opportunity than to have a, a town hall, if, if that's what the community's looking for, and it definitely sounds like that's a reasonable thing to do, but at this juncture, I think we've gotten enough of a feel for where you wanna take it, that I'm all in favor of you moving forward to technical review, to in fact add that meat to the bone.
I agree with what's been said, the, the, the one thing I would add is that we're, this is way too early, we haven't even begun to talk about the financing and incentives and stuff, um, which is a huge component, uh, we'll get to that afterwards, but, um, yeah, there are still an awful lot of numbers, your, your plan needs to lose any concept of townhomes, I mean, that, yeah, yeah.
Done.
Not, not even, not even.
You know, it's a shame it was even on the, on the picture, 'cause now, you know, that's gonna.
Okay.
And, and we had a two-and-a-half-hour meeting this afternoon with staff and, and the guys from Centennial, there was no discussions of townhomes at all, okay, just, just an apartment, just a apartment.
Okay.
Yeah, well, you gotta take that off of her.
Well, also, I also had one other item of request list, I mean, uh, talking about being a destination, think about the possibility of a, of an, of an ice rink of some kind, because we've got Glacier right there, and, and I know they could use a third sheet, and that might help it make a, make it be a, uh, another thing that you could add to be part of the destination, but otherwise, I'm willing to go forward and look at it, but there's a lot of questions. But otherwise, I'm willing to go forward and look at it, but there's a lot of questions still to be answered.
Okay, I've said too much tonight, of course I want you to go forward. I don't, you don't want that whole mall to go fallow. You'll lose your three million dollars to District Seventy-three. I know you don't know that, do you, President? It's a good, what, that's, well, that's why we're here, but I don't wanna take two years to approve this, because it will fail.
Let's see what Mike has.
Go ahead.
My eyes are looking, I, something has to be done. This is a start. Again, we're gonna communicate over and over, and the input from our residents is extremely important. But I would like to, to see this go forward. There is definitely something that can be done, and I think we can all work together to do it. So, please, go forward.
And if you sell, anybody sells their houses, sell them to seniors, no kids.
Look, look, everyone knows that something needs to be done there, there's, you know, that, that is not the question, I just think the community would just like to make sure they have some input. You know, your concept is great, obviously, you're gonna tweak it based upon the feedback you get from the community, and also the village board, and really the staff here that works with you guys on a daily basis. As, as long as the community has some input, you know, it's, I think you're, you're gonna be fine. So, as far as a technical review, absolutely, I think people have to understand the process, because stuff went out on Facebook as far as how stuff gets approved, and, you know, this is just concept, you know, they just wanna get a feel for, you know, with the staff, 'cause they did all the work initially. You can't stop anyone from coming to the village and co- going to the staff, hey, we wanna come and do this in the village, and then it comes before us and say, hey, what do you think, based upon their meetings with the staff? So, by no means, we were not privy to any of this information, so nothing was quote unquote pre-approved, relative, you know, you know, before this meeting ever started. So, I think that, you know, the village board is wide open to the community, and, and so was Roger, no question about it, so, I think as long as we get through this technical review, and you're open to having the community, giving them a chance to have input, then this should do very well.
Okay. Trustee Brown.
Thank you. Echo what everybody else said, I think the residents don't want more kids, fifty-five and over would be ideal. As a mom of four kids, little ones, I would like to see more activities for them, a person that does not like the cold weather, somewhere we can take them when it's really cold outside. I love your concept, but the residents are ultimately what, the ones that kinda make the decision, because that's what we based our vote off of, so. But we can go to technical review and continue the process.
Okay.
At this juncture, it's not your turn to have a speech?
Obviously, you're experienced developers, you understand that concept review is just that, it's theoretical, it's an idea to get a, a little bit of advanced preview into the thought process of the, the residents, as well as the board members. Granting concept approval, if you will, or saying it's okay to go ahead to technical review, is not a guarantee that the project ultimately will be approved, that any zoning approvals will be given, or that there will be any variances from any of those zoning approvals. That has to go through the, the, the process, as you know. To the residents that are here, and everyone else, I would add that going through technical review, we've tossed that turnaround several times tonight, that's a process that can take several weeks, several months to go through, for, for, for the developer to come through, put, do the necessary engineering, the necessary architecture, all of the necessary things that go into building a, a project of this scope. So, there certainly is, as the mayor said, a number of opportunities for additional comment in the future. Having said that, given the amount of time it takes to go through that, there certainly is the ability, I spoke with the village manager, about working to get advance notice of some of these meetings, it's not gonna, it's not gonna come on a Friday, and then Tuesday, they don't just show up, we're gonna see things weeks ahead, staff is gonna be approving them, and so certainly, there's an opportunity through Facebook, through cable channel, through other me- social media, other means that we have, to get the message out as to when, quote, the next meeting will be, and certainly, we can do that, and, and make sure that the public is given adequate notice to, to come forward with that, so. Developer, you understand, Hal, you understand, you've been through this several times, you've heard the speech, so, concept approval is what it is.
Okay. We have to go into closing?
Yes, sir.
All right.
You know, if I, you know, if I sit up here, and I have to be sometimes the bad cop, I will be, because this isn't the first time we've done a project like this, and this is a fifty-year-old, you know, institution in town, and we better treat them with some love, because we don't want that going fallow. That's all I'm gonna say. And if I'm sitting here, and I, and I know things that some of you folks don't know, I'm gonna try to clarify things, you know? I don't want you to just think, we're starting from square one, we're not, not with these guys, not with that mall, okay? It's important, it's very important, you know, it's generated tens of millions of dollars for this shit, it's probably more than that, it's probably, you know, fifty million dollars over the years, just in sales tax revenue, okay? So, you know, let's be nice to these guys, don't treat them like the enemy. Thank you. All right, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second.
I'll, I'll indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, thank you, the meeting's over. And this won't be the first time we'll be here.